All right, thank you everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call the Nottingham Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, August tenth, two thousand twenty-two to order. Just a reminder to everybody here, if you haven't signed in, please sign in the back. Second reminder, there's a overflow viewing room in conference room two down the hall. There's a TV setup, so you'll be able to hear and see the meeting. We plan on taking the cases in the order of the agenda, so you'd be able to come in to speak towards a case that you're specifically interested in. I'll go over, we have one continued case, a new case, and a new design review. So in general, the first thing we do as a planning board on new cases is we have to act on application completeness. That's before we can get into really high-level discussion about it. For design reviews, that's a more formal process, but it's still non-binding. It just allows us and the applicant to have higher-level discussion, so to guide them before they decide to invest and come forward with another application. And then lastly, if you can, the acoustics in here are pretty tough with the recordings. So if you have side conversations, please step outside for a minute to have those, because it can make it really hard to hear up here. And then lastly, during the public comment section, any public comments, please direct towards the board, not toward any applicant or butter or anything like that, and we'll address it from there. And I appreciate your patience. It might get a little bit hot in here, open the door, try to get some air in. That's where we're at. So first, where our business would be, go around the room and have everybody introduce themselves?
Andrew Jones, Altona.
Gary Anderson.
Tom Moore, Select Board Rep.
Amy McKinnon.
Edward Veal.
Blair Hating, SRPC.
And Ms. Jones will be seated and voting for Ms. Mooney tonight. So the first item on the agenda is case number twenty-two dash zero zero nine dash S U B. Application from Robin Kumow requesting a two-lot subdivision. Property is located at one seventy-six Stevens Hill Road. Identified as tax map forty-nine lot four. Stevens Hill Road is designated as Ascenic Road. And this is a continued case. So welcome the applicant to the table, just to give us another quick rundown. We've already accepted this application as complete, and we've already indicated that this application is not a development of regional impact. Mr. Ross, where you can go ahead and give us an update as to where things were, where they are, and any changes in between. Since the first meeting that we accepted this, and then we had a sidewalk in between, and now we're here tonight.
Okay, well, I can, Roscoe Blaisdell, the Lancer there. And just a few changes to plans. At the last meeting, you asked for pins on the lot line, two hundred feet apart. So I'm showing pins now. Out back, I'm showing the two hundred by two hundred foot buildable, which is easily met. And you have a requirement to make sure the town road is fifty feet in front. So I've, the people across the road twenty years ago gave up a little strip, so I came fifty feet from them. My question is, is this an easement? Am I giving you a quick claim deed? What are you looking for? Like, are we giving you the land, the town?
It's usually easement to the town.
Easement to the town, okay. So a note on the plan is good enough?
I think the last one we had might have been Smoke Street, a little sliver there. And I think you said the files, the easement documents, and the select board has to sign off.
So you do want a recorded easement?
Has to be, there would need to be something that the select board.
Okay, so you're rather not a note on, we'll have a note on the plan, but you'll want something in your hand that gets recorded?
Right, because the select board has to vote on that. We can't, we can.
They have to vote to accept it?
Yes.
So those are the only changes. There was a concern, like, can we, if we keep the driveway where it is, can we meet ten percent grade? So what I've done is I've shown what's already there. Then when you get past the wetland, I just kicked the driveway, so it's, just kind of goes along the grades, and that's less than ten percent. So we could, either, either way, one side of the wetland or not, we can, we can get out back and meet steepness requirements. So that's pretty much it for that. Because we're dealing with filling wetland, we need a conditional use permit, which I've filled one out, and you guys have a copy. So that's a key thing we'd like to have tonight if we can, is just make sure, you know, we can get the conditional use permit, and then also continue with the subdivision itself, too.
So basically, the plan that you handed out tonight, the difference between these and what we had previously is you're now showing, I think, one of the questions from the butter you brought up was the lot line for lot, the lot Rock Street forty-eight, two and a half street. Wasn't actually the rock wall, it separated, which is, I believe, is what you mentioned. And then the, the post-easement for the driveway.
Yeah, it'd be about five or six foot wide, and the entire frontage of the lot that we're creating.
As well as the built-able area and the two test bits of the block A.
Yep.
And then, so bring it back to the board. So in between then, so we, at the last meeting, we had, so I'm sorry, the applicant handed me tonight an application for a conditional use permit, which I took a quick look at. Mr. Blaney is also taking a look at it for us. We'll have to, we may possibly act on that tonight. The other option, another item we had was after the last meeting, we had indicated we would seek some legal guidance on this. Since then, council has responded. Each of you should have received a copy of that. If you want to discuss that item further, we can go into non-public. Or if you've had a chance to review it, and there's no specific discussion about what town council said, then we can just continue. Again, that's privileged confirmation, so we might discuss it specifically. That's going to be non-public.
My original thought was that we didn't need to, but now that we have a new application in conjunction with this, it kind of raises some questions.
Yeah, so that's fine. So to enter into non-public, it's under Article ninety-one A dash three, RSA ninety-one A three. This would fall under Section two L, consideration of legal advice provided by legal counsel to one or more members of the body. If legal counsel is not present, so that's where that would be. So if anybody wants to do that, we would need a motion specifying reason. Got that vote on it? Voted yes, and I would just recommend that we do it down in the land use office, instead of making everybody else get up and leave the room.
So that was ninety-one A dash three two L?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to the planning board to enter non-public for the purpose of discussing the legal opinion and new conditional use permit. This application per Article ninety-one A dash three two L.
We have a motion by Mr. McKinnon, and a second by Ms. Anderson. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. I'll propose, that motion carries. Six-zero. So what I just ask everybody is, instead of making you get up, we're just gonna step out for a minute. We'll go down to the land use office. Mr. Lemieux, if you could come with us to record the minutes. And then we'll be back momentarily.
Well, we need, we need it. Yeah, we need to get this.
Yeah, I guess, though, what we talked about, though, is, see, when they come back, if, you know, at least, if it sounds like it's gonna be a subdivision. We'll address the conditional use permit after.
You don't wanna just get a, we need.
Well, no, 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 if you can believe me, Roscoe can do all that.
Well, if they're against it, then they're against him. I mean, if they're against it today, they'll be against it tomorrow.
Well, I mean, you kind of need to see where to go on that.
Yes, it can go either way. I mean, if they say no, then let's get the subdivision. I got involved because of his subdivision across the road for his cousin. Piece of cake, it's a field. How simple is it?
The only nice thing is that, you know, obviously, you know, the condition. Say, if they, Ross needs to be arrested, so he's right now showing that.
Well, we'll.
Yeah, I mean, that's our confidence, is that, you know, we need to have a whole space, and it's.
Gary's getting in my son's deck tomorrow. Yeah, I've known him for thirty years.
Where's your son?
Raymond.
How old is he?
Thirty-three. But his house is on Thousand Acres. Just go out and get a folder and just pile the trash. Works, it's Coca-Cola, he sells, takes soda to different stores. He's kind of like the soda broker or whatever.
He probably doesn't have any service.
Nah.
It's funny that way.
He, if you plopped him up in Little Woods, he'd probably get lost. I mean, he hunts, but, I mean, some people, I mean, I can just, you can plop him, and I can find my way. I mean, I'm, I know where you're getting around, but some people don't belong in the woods this much. Bad parenting with your son.
Well, it's funny, the kids, I mean, all my kids, my sons grow up, Hayden, serving stuff. At least they're all family, and they do a lot of.
Well, my dad was a veterinarian. You got a cow that's sick two in the morning, you go two in the morning. You don't wait two. I mean, it's, it's tougher to become a veterinarian than a medical doctor for people. It's, plus, they have to have fifty percent women, IRNAs. It's just, so you can have better grades, but you don't make it because they have quota for other people. I'm having my own business, no employees, it's just like, it's so, so free. I mean, do you have any?
I was up to a couple way back, back the last couple of years. Remember, when it was actually a friend of mine's son. Wanted to come to work, but, alright. So I kept him busy, tried to take him short, and urged him, you know, you know, actually, they all have licenses or something.
I mean, you get your septic license, you could, good money.
You know, it's a good thing to have. He wasn't ambitious that way. Eventually, so he worked for me for a couple of years. Back last year, Walmart was all, the house here, Raymond, the house for twenty-eight bucks. Full-time, five thousand, I'll sign on.
Yeah, you work on a field crew, you're not gonna get that much.
Yeah, so he actually applied for the job, got the job. And when his mother figured out that they were looking for another job, she was good friends with Mike Baldur. T F M R was looking for this field house, and Mike knew that he was pretty well-trained in the game. And so they offered twenty-five bucks a hour, full-time with benefits. So he's been working for T F M R, and he loves it. He's the type of kid, he actually enjoys field work. Oh, and that's, you know, T F M R, that's all he did, on the field crew. He has a machete, you know, I actually used to get scared because he was liking the machete too much.
Oh, I got scars. I have some machete scars.
Well, yeah, but, yeah, but he was, you know, you worry about somebody that's enjoying it too much, and slices it all.
We gotta move up, we gotta go for that office job, you know?
Well, he doesn't want that. He's happy to just whack and brush.
Does not go to planning board meetings. I was going to planning board meetings when I was nineteen years old, I mean, straight out of college. And I worked, I worked for a Lancer there, wetland scientist, soil scientist. I mean, like, I mean, I was like, I mean, nineteen, I mean, now I'm, I'm not afraid, but shit, nineteen.
Yeah, you're intimidated.
Oh, Spanish Inquisition, shit. So it toughens you up pretty quick. But I, but I always worked for small companies. I mean, it was just me and the boss, so I did everything.
Well, I mean, you worked, I mean, selling.
Worked for Richie for eighteen years, and it was just me, Richie, and one other guy for quite a while. So I'm going to planning board, and doing everything. And deed, so it's, if you worked for Moran and run the rod for ten years, yeah, they go. I got licensed at age twenty-three, I'm the youngest person that ever got licensed. I only had five years of experience, and you need six, so it took me another year, just. Home lived in the Abergama another year, then they gave me the stamp. And no one is ever gonna beat me, because the requirement now is you need six years before you can take the exam.
Um, so. Tony thinks that, obviously, he'd like the fire pong, like, at the same time. I'm also sure, oh, that helps.
As long as you don't touch the wet. The old days, well, that's where you put the fire pong.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's where the state gave us the, um, rural one gives.
But nowadays, they want you to put it in dry land. I mean, they don't want you to put it on top of the mountain, because it's not gonna work. But I tried them, and it's just like, oh, yeah, well, that's the obvious place. Well, you're, you're making a wet letter, but you're changing the habitat, you know? Now salamander likes it now, now a frog likes it, and it's just, it's just driving me crazy.
You know what you think, but she's, well, the part of their logic was that it'd be closer to the driveway. Justification for the driveway, but at the end, look, two, just, they actually.
And if you put it here, now that's wet, okay, there's a setback.
But I thought we were thinking more in for that area.
What, for, with the fire pong?
Yeah, that would be, or they're over this way.
The fire pong? No, no, the grades would have to be down here. You've gotta put the grader down there.
But if you have dry land, then make it wet, then you're, it's wet. Now you have a setback from that. And if you wanted to, if I changed my mind, I want to fill it, no, you're stuck with a wet area.
So we'll just hold off on that one?
That wouldn't bring it up.
Yeah, it wouldn't bring that up, that's.
It is no permits if you, if you don't put it in the wet. Subdivision I just took you to, across the road, I'm getting approved now, but, um, they want me to do a cistern, because I'm doing five lots. I got a, I have a cistern under half a mile from me, but, so.
Want another subdivision, did?
No, the cistern down the road is someone else's, but, but, well, where you and I turned around. It's just, so I'd be damned if I was gonna do it, so I told them I'll do sprinklers. And I said, yes. So I looked up sprinklers, sprinklers are about six thousand dollars apiece. I mean, I call it a company in Salem, so, so I do the math. A cistern is like a hundred and twenty thousand or whatever for thirty thousand gallons. I've got five lots. If I just do sprinklers, and I tell them, each, you have to put a sprinkler in your house, well, six thousand dollars.
Well, it gets added back to that, that's up to the buyer.
It's up to the buyer. So I'm not spending a hundred and twenty thousand, and, and their insurance might be lower because they have a. Because, I mean, a friend of mine in the business, he says, he's, he talked to a fire chief, he says, we never had to pull a body out of a house with a sprinklers. And you don't, it's just instant. I mean, all your heat rock.
Oh, yeah, I agree with you.
Hopefully, they can tell us.
Thank you, everybody.
I'll make that motion when you're ready for it.
I'm ready.
Good, everybody? Okay. I'll make a motion that we close non-public per ninety-one A dash three two L.
All right, we'll do a, that was a motion by Mr. McKinnon, second by Ms. Anderson, to close the non-public session. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll roll call. Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson? That's, motion carries six-zero, so that non-public is closed. All right. Okay, so where we're at. So we have a, we received from the applicant, a, an application for a conditional use permit tonight. My general feeling on that is that we have to review a few things procedurally to see if that needs to be legally noticed as part of an application. If we have to do re-noticing for it, as well as we need some time to review it. Generally, any new materials we request a week at a time, so that we can, we can and staff can have time to review. So seeing that there's one copy, my opinion on that is that we would not take action on that tonight until we can confirm those processes and make sure that everything's followed accordingly. But I'll entertain discussion on that.
I'm inclined to agree, since I don't know if I can vote on something I haven't read. Can we?
I would read it to you.
That would take some time, probably.
It's quite a.
Well, with a conditional use permit, there's a, there's a butters list that's supposed to be attached. There's a, there's a whole bunch of other procedural items that.
We can't run with our butters that we already have?
Unfortunately, a conditional use permit, so I'm gonna take a step back even from that. So a conditional use permit, I may have misspoke at a prior meeting. When action on that is taken by the planning board, so within the zoning ordinance, RSA allows us to create conditional use permits, which allows some items to stay within purview of the planning board and not go through zoning for a variance. But when action is taken on a conditional use permit by the planning board, either way, either approval or disapproval, the appeal of which goes to the spirit court. It skips, but it does not go to zoning board, it goes to the spirit court. So, so with anything, this isn't a waiver request, which are a lot more informal. This is part of zoning, and we want to make sure that any actions we take or review of documents, that the items are complete enough to cover the regulations of that. So again, procedurally, if there's supposed to be in a butters list, I gotta make sure that, that it's noticed accordingly on an, on an agenda, that there might be action for a conditional use permit. And we have work that we're meeting all the requirements, statutory requirements of such.
It's, it's treated similarly to how Ascenic Road needs to be on the agenda.
Correct, correct. Make action, final action, at least on Ascenic. The other item is, my opinion, so we, regarding some of the other issues that we discussed prior, or some of the other concerns that we hadn't really encountered before, was action on an application that may have either, you know, zoning, current zoning issue, or state action, things like that. So I feel that we can continue with the process. We've already accepted the application as complete. So we probably could have, that incomplete pending those items being, being addressed, but we've accepted it as complete. So then we can act as if those items kind of didn't exist, but would require that they meet the current zoning. So part of that would be the conditional use permit for any kind of wetland crossing. But again, we can't act, I don't, I don't think that we can, that we should act on a conditional use permit that we were just in, even haven't had a chance, kind of proper review. Do you find anything separate on?
I have. One of the conditions or components of the process is that the conservation commission has provided comments relative to the value of the wetland under construction and design project as it relates to the wetland. So I think, we're saving it tonight, and then I can, I'll tell you.
I guess, I honestly, I don't have a copy of the conditional use permit that we have. On there, does it, like, do we have the checklist? It's been a while since I've seen it. Does it have on there specifically a butters list?
Yeah.
So there's like a.
Section.
Requirements on the permit?
Yeah, it's a section to be filled out. So obviously, notification had to have gone out for this. And it had to have been posted on a public notice, and potentially even advertised.
I'm not comfortable.
While, let me just, while the butters list and notifications may be similar, the conditions of review and approval are different. So having it as a separate item, I mean, that's why we had, as you pointed out, I thought the same thing with Ascenic Roads.
Well, and my point to, so it has that, but I don't think our ordinance specifically has a procedure on special, on conditional use permits. But I know you had got your book out, I didn't know if the state, you might be looking that up, if the state has RSA requirements for conditional use permits.
You're right.
Cause you're right.
I'm not seeing anything yet, I'm still scrolling. However, one of the things it does say here is that the conservation commission does, has provided comments.
I think that's similar to, almost to how we treat subdivisions where, prior to action on a, like, a vote on an application.
So you're talking about just simply whether we can accept it?
Yeah, like, that first step of, is the application complete?
That does not appear to be a step in this process, but that doesn't mean it's not. I just haven't, you know.
I think, it would, if anything, it's an RSA control, not us, but.
They keep sending me back to this, same RSA doesn't really talk about procedure at all. It actually talks more about procedure to adopt the ability to do conditional use permits. Not, okay, you've adopted it, now it's part of your ordinance, here's how you, here's how you handle it.
I think the tricky one here is, this is, this would be, actually be the first conditional use permit submitted to the board. We adopted it last year.
Yeah, I mean, the application says June twenty-twenty-one, so that means that.
Somehow we've avoided them since then, but, so we haven't even dealt with how they've been notified in the past.
That the, the part of the RSA that talks about conditional use permits, just talks about how you can implement them, it doesn't really discuss how to. That the, the part of the RSA that talks about conditional use permits, just talks about how you can implement them. It doesn't really discuss how to, um. How to, how to go, since, since it's part of an overall application that has been noticed, because you can, conditional use permits can also come up when it's not a new case, a new thing like that. It could be someone's coming before the board or conditional use permit of a current site that they're building on. Not doing any other subdivision or anything else, but they maybe wanna fill a wetland. So, so there's other times where that would need to be legally noticed separately. This, I don't think does, because the meeting has already been legally noticed. I mean, I think procedurally it makes sense to put it on the agenda if we know that we're gonna be acting on a conditional use permit or if we have one as part of an application.
I think unless we can point to something statutory that says we can't act on acceptance or completeness, and I don't know if we can. But not to say that we don't, if it's accepted, that the discussion is a different topic, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't even think we have to accept it as, it's not, I don't think we have to accept it as complete or incomplete, anything like that. I think we just can act upon the, uh, on the request.
So isn't what's really new to us, the fact that the wetlands piece is under the conditional is, is that we didn't have conditional use for.
Right. Correct. Previously, prior to, when this went through town, town vote, to add this as, amend the zoning ordinance to add this piece in, it was, um, any direction fail, things like that, were just disallowed and it had to go to zoning. The town amended the conditional, the, the wetlands ordinance to, to add a conditional use section in to allow for some to be done through the planning board instead of sending everything over to, to the ZBA. A byproduct of that is conditional use permits go to the superior court for appeal versus, uh, the ZBA. So my issue tonight is, is specifically more that generally we require deliverables of any new material a week ahead of time, so that we have plenty of time to review. And, and literally, we're handing additional information tonight, so we haven't had a chance to really go through that and make sure everything's there. So that's why I would, I'm hesitant to take any action on that tonight.
I don't even know what a motion would, what motion would be made, because there's no.
So a motion for, a motion of action on a conditional use permit would be read, to go through the permit application and then go through the criteria set forth in the zoning regs under the.
Right, right, yeah.
Cause it outlines, these are the items that have to be met to be granted a, a conditional use permit.
No, I'm ju, I'm just thinking, cause normally if we would have an application to review, we would have been able to review the context of it and then been able to make a motion as if it's complete or not with an application number. There's an application number, but nobody's reviewed it, so I'm not even really sure what the.
Right, so.
It's just not, it's a motion not to entertain it at this meeting because of a lack of note, uh, timing.
Correct, yeah. And then it would also give the applicant a little bit more time in case they wanted to review it or make sure that everything is, that it's fully complete, so that, uh, so we do act on it, we can.
And the intent is we can still continue conversation on the accepted subdivision?
Yep.
Basically, you'll need for me a newer butters list and labels and whatever fees there are with that.
I don't even think there is any fees. It's just.
Well, per, you want four dollars per butter type thing? A dollar per, okay.
Wow. But the big thing is so that it finds its way on an agenda. Cause it hasn't been noticed on an agenda.
I don't think we need to make a motion on that tonight. Um, we can, to keep it clear, which would just be that, um, that we await, that we wait to act on a conditional use permit application until butters.
Proper notification.
Proper notifications of course. Proper timing allowed for, uh, for the staff review.
Don't have anything to continue.
Yeah, but I don't think we're, I don't think we're gonna continue for yet, in case, again, we can have an additional discussion about other items before we do a continuance. So we can sum all up in one, one motion later.
I think that's the way to do it.
Okay.
Instead of separate.
All right.
Now can we discuss the subdivision application?
Sure can.
I have a few things and I'll try and keep it to the, obviously to the application. Thank you for adding the, all the buildable areas, stuff like that, stuff that we gotta get on the plan. And the front easement. I guess I'll bring it back to the overarching discussion. I was out of town when the sidewalk occurred for this, but I was able to stop by the property today. Luckily, it's fairly open, so it's easy to see what we're looking at.
You went out after I'd flagged the line?
Yeah, was at the red flag.
Yep.
I saw that. Yeah, thank you. And I guess I wanna bring it back. I know kind of, you know, things were running long at the last meeting. And it kind of brought a part about this conversation about the wetland crossing that exists, and there's enforcement action, stuff like that, and there was discussion amongst many members of the board about the alternative of showing the driveway somewhere else. I guess, what is, since that meeting, I know there was some discussion that probably you guys needed to discuss with the applicant and stuff like that, what was, what is the reason, I guess, at this point, or the response to not moving the driveway? Uh, not moving the driveway cut, obviously there is no approved driveway cut, but showing where, I guess, moving the approved alignment.
Yep.
What's the, I'm just curious what the thought there is.
A big part of our walk was me showing the alternate route. So you're coming off the road, we had a driveway starting near property line and going along the line. About fifty feet out, you need a culvert because of the dip in the land. Then you go out about three hundred feet and you'd need another culvert because of the terrain of the land. Then you get out opposite the cemetery and you'd need a third culvert. So what we have now is a driveway following the terrain perfectly. It just goes with the contours. And once you pass the wetland, it just goes up the hill. The alternate is to change, uh, put a driveway in the middle of a field, which the whole thing was, we don't want a driveway in the middle of a, I mean, a mowed field. It's just, you put it next to the property line. So that's why that happened. So what's there now works good to the land. If we had to remove it, then you're just gonna muck it all up and try to make it normal and make another, make a big scar right in the middle of the field. I mean, it's, for anyone that walked out there, it's just like, like the wetland, it's like, that's wet? Well, it does qualify, but it's just barely.
Yeah, I walked it. You could see the, the change in the plant life.
Yeah.
That was kind of the biggest determining factor. It almost looks like a pretty clear line. And some, you know, there's, there's probably more to discuss.
It's the dry season too, so we weren't seeing.
But the culvert, the culvert's been there a year and there's no scouring. I mean, the culvert's plenty big enough. The water goes in, the water goes out. Once it goes out, there's no channel of rushing wa, it's just, it's very, very, very little water. It's just, the water's kind of seeping out of the ground.
Right, and I, I think part of that, I don't even know if we can discuss, because that, that, that's handled under the conditional use permit since we're within that, that region. I guess, I'm more focused on the alternative driveway alignment. I mean, I guess, in my opinion, the belief that it would be a scour through the field, I guess somebody can make the same, I mean, you can make the same argument that if the, a paved driveway was installed, in either scenario where the existing one is shown, where it's now just stone, gravel, stone, there's really not much of a difference, and we've kind of already gone over this, not much of a length distance either, and you actually have flatter slopes for your driveway. And I think in terms of the culverts, I mean, there's, it, it's gradual enough out there. You're gonna have to ditch on the ups, uphill side of any of these driveways. And my last thing, and I noted it today when I was there, is that the sightlines, obviously this is a very narrow area. The road almost sits in a gully because of the adjacent topography. There's, if, if you're pulling out of where the driveway is shown currently, where there's currently a, uh.
By the cemetery?
Yeah. I mean, it's, I, I know there's been people talking about how fast people go on Stevens Hill. The sightline there is, you're basically nosed out into that road, which is a one-lane road. There's a telephone pole there. It's hard to see around. Driveway along that share, closer to that shared lot line that we're proposing would provide, what, almost two hundred feet more of sightline. So I, I'm still under the belief, I really don't think there's a difference in terms of aesthetics or what the final product is gonna be. You're gonna end up with a similar length driveway, um, no matter if you choose option A or B. And obviously, we kind of have to limit it. The, after the fact, or the wetland impact is kind of its own thing that we can't really talk about under the subdivision application, obviously, but that, that does play in. That's where, kind of where I stand. I guess I still, I still don't see the downside to avoiding impact, because I look at this as if we were seeing nothing on here. If you were coming three years ago and putting a line in, there was an option to go around. I guess that's, that's where I stand.
And again, I, I mentioned this at the last meeting, when, when the applicant, when we've talked about moving the driveway towards the other lot line, towards the, uh, the common boundary with the parent parcel, the northern lot line, we discussed moving the, the curb cut, because the curb cut currently is not a permitted curb cut. So I don't know why you would cut across the field instead of moving the driveway to, to adhere that lot line. Again, it's gonna have a lot of improvements in that. That sightline specifically, that you've got the cemetery rock wall there, as Mr. McKinnon pointed out, and I believe we have a butter letter discussing it as well. And then the road slopes off, or downhill, as you had, south on Stevens Hill, directly after that. The property is also, parent parcel is elevated compared to this. So as we walked that, that area where potentially the driveway could be moved to, or an alternate location for the driveway, it seemed like, not paved. Really wouldn't have much of an aesthetic. Aesthetic change due to the topography there. Probably have more discussion on that, unless we can, we're able to act on the conditional use permit.
I think that's part of it. We gotta dance around not diving in too deep on it.
We have a road builder that went out there and looked at the site, and he may wanna make some comments if you wanna hear that right now, about what we have now versus what might have to be.
Um, I mean, I think that might be helpful whenever, one night that we're able to act on the, uh, uh, application to hear that, hear that testimony.
We can't talk about the existing one and anything through the well-inn impacts, since we don't, special condition, but conditional use permit can't be discussed. The alternative alignment could be discussed, I guess, in theory.
Well, that's.
One that you guys just kind of talked about.
He's, he's here. I mean, rather than, he can just tell you his thoughts, and, and I told you my thoughts of the alternate route, and, um, actually, I do build driveways for myself, and so that's his job, um, seven, you know, six days a week, so.
So regarding that, I, I have a question too about the proposed driveway. So now you're into the side of the hill, or, so that's, my, my question is, are, is there actually going to be kind of cuts, I'll call it, into the side of the hill?
The way we have it now, it's no cuts and it's smooth. The other way, there's a bunch of cuts. I mean, you're, I mean, you don't notice it as much on the plan, but standing out there, you can see, yep, there's a, if we don't put a culvert here, we're gonna make a heck of a ditch and we're gonna have to raise the road. There's like three spots.
Yeah, I guess. I think there's more we wanna dive into.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say, for sake of this meeting, since we can't act on the conditional use permit tonight, that we append any discussion about the driveway, the current location, proposed locations, changes, because again, all that's gonna hinge upon, um, I think, you know, action upon that, that permit, and then additional state and other, you know, conditions that would have to be.
Okay, that's all right. So we have a buildable lot. Uh, we have a state right now saying, you know, fix what you did, but right now, we're ultimately trying to get a permit to keep what we have. So one way or another, are they gonna say yes or no? But no matter what, we have a buildable lot. They can go on the other side, so could we get subdivision approval tonight?
No, we can't. Not, not till we act on that conditional use permit. Cause the way it is, well, no, because now the plan we have in, in front of us right now. So the plan that we're looking at now would require us take action on a conditional use permit application because of the wetlands. Uh, the wetlands weren't being impacted at all. Then we potentially could, cause then we could condition any state approvals and everything else. Those are being conditioned anyway, regardless of either way. But no, with the application tonight. Final action on this. That would react on it.
So I guess I will send you in a butters list soon and some fees. You already have the application.
Yeah, and I know you're gonna hand that tonight, so I don't know if you feel confident in it, what's in it, or if you wanna.
Take it back to resubmit.
I'm, I'm good with it. It is a bunch of questions, and I answered them all. It's just like a ZBA. It's the same question asked several ways, many times.
So, um, we continued the public hearing. I'm, I'm gonna reopen the public hearing for, if, if there's any new testimony, if it's, uh, additional testimony or, or kind of discussion about anything that's already been discussed, I ask you, that you just hold off. We'll continue the public hearing again, whenever this is continued. And you know, we have a few butter letters, uh, in addition to what was previously submitted. Those will go in the file. Everybody's had, would have received those on the board.
And online.
And online, so. I think we've addressed most of the comments that were in there. And, and all those. And, and the rest are kind of hinging, hinging on the conditional use permit, um, action. So I'll go ahead and open, reopen the public hearing. If there's anybody that'd like to speak for, against, or just has questions about the application, please come forward. And again, please just state your name and direct any comments towards us.
Peter, R. One fifty-six Stevens Hill Road, the director butter. I did submit a wet, a wetland, a letter from wetland scientist. You, you have got that in your package?
Yeah, we have your letter as well as the.
Eleven rolls. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that they're, and you can't really do anything until you approve that conditional use permit across the wetlands in the existing place. If they move the driveway over next to the property line, it's pretty much an easy, an easy shot. Uh, there'll be no conditional use permit. They do?
Yep, yeah, we can't take any action, further action, till we act on that conditional use permit, which we'll do at the next, uh, the next meeting.
Okay.
Chance to review.
And that conditional use permit, will we put up on our webpage, so we can see it?
Bill.
We'll have time to respond, cause it won't happen till the next meeting, right?
Correct. Yeah, the next meeting will be in September.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Did we see the copy of that letter from the wetland scientist?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's, I believe it's online.
Or offline?
Yeah.
If it comes back, I'll make you.
Yeah.
I'll get it up.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Mary Ann Stoddard, one sixty-three Stevens Hill Road. As a representative of the only abutter that it has direct view of this property, I would strongly ask that the plant, the planning board, um, vote to not have to have that driveway moved. For the sake of the view from the house, it's a beautiful field, and why do they have to put a driveway in the middle of it, when where the driveway is doesn't really take away from the view of the field? So I would ask you guys strongly, we are the only house that has a, a view of that. No other butter has a direct view of it. And since nineteen ninety-three, that's been our view. And I would strongly, strongly urge driveway stay where it is. Thank you.
Any additional, um, comment? None, I'll close, I'll close the public hearing for tonight, it'll be continued again, obviously, to bring it back to the board. Is there any further discussion? In this case, for tonight? If not, I would entertain a motion to continue, um, first meeting in September is fourteen.
Just my questions, does that work? I assume next meeting you wanna be on the agenda?
We're ready to roll. Uh, well, actually, I'm gonna be in Alabama maybe, but you can handle it.
So the fourteen-
It's hunting season.
Um, in that case, I'll make a motion to continue case number two-two dash zero-zero-nine dash S U B to the September fourteenth, uh, two thousand twenty-two meeting at seven P M.
Yeah, I'll leave that.
What's that?
Do you wanna mention that, that, on that meeting, we'll also address the, uh, conditional use permit?
At that meeting, um, the conditional use permit application will be reviewed for acceptance.
Give me a second. All right, we have a motion by Mr. McKinnon, a second by Mr. Anderson, uh, to continue to September fourteenth, as well as to, um, address the conditional use permit at that meeting. Any further discussion? All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, opposed, motion carries six, zero.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is case number twenty-two dash zero-one-one dash S U B. It's an application from Jones and Beach Engineering on behalf of Jim Rosborough. Requesting an eleven lot subdivision, property located on Moore's Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire, identified as tax map seventy-two, lot thirteen dash one.
Uh, for this application, I'll have to recuse myself due to a work conflict.
So just for the record, uh, Mr. McKinnon is recused, so we don't have another alternate for tonight, so any votes on this case would be, uh, count of five. Once Mr. Moore returns.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, my name is Barry Guyer, I'm with Jones and Beach Engineers. I'm here for the applicant. Uh, the property is located in map seventy-two, lot thirteen dash one off of Moore's Road. Uh, it consists of fifty-four point eight-five acres in the residential agricultural zone. Uh, property, as you can see on the C-one sheet I have up there, is bound by Moore's Road on the east, um, Raymond Town Line to the south, and has Jamsa Trail on the west side of the property. There is a large wetland complex that runs to the center of the property. Uh, both Moore's Road and Jamsa Trail are town roads with undefined rightaways at this time. Uh, the intent of this project is to construct an open space subdivision consisting of eleven residential lots. As part of the open space project, the plan set includes a yield plan that depicts our ability to construct an eleven lot standard subdivision. For our yield plan, lot five-one. All lots contain two acres with two hundred feet of frontage and a thirty thousand square feet of buildable area. For our open space, which you kind of see on C-two, as I said, we're proposing eleven open space subdivision lots. So all lots in this, um, proposed project are existing frontage lots, and there are no new roads to be constructed. Ten of the lots are located on Moore's Road with one off of Jamsa at the top of the page. Uh, all the, all open space lots will have at least thirty thousand square foot building envelope and a hundred thousand, or, excuse me, hundred feet of frontage. Lots are all serviced by on-site sewer, wells and septics. The open space project is required to provide fifty percent of the Gose Track area in open space, where, which would be about twenty-seven point four acres of open space. We are providing thirty-one point nine acres of open space, so we're over that requirement. Uh, the open space we're proposing is to be held by the homeowners association, with no, um, public access, just homeowners access. And with creating that subdivision, we'll define the forty-foot rightaway for Moore's Road. Um, Jamsa is a little bit odd because it kinda sits not at the edge of the property specifically. But you can see at the top of our page, the orange on my sheet would be the rightaway, the sub, or the, uh, eastern boundary of the rightaway, and then the actual property line there. The western portion of the rightaway, so it is a larger rightaway. Just to the fact that if we gave a forty-foot rightaway, there'd be a couple of parcels that are just kinda sitting out there, non-buildable parcels. We are requesting one deviation from the open space standards under Article Four, Section S A G, uh, the landscape buffer. The applicant is requesting the elimination of the landscape buffer that's required. Uh, we believe it is appropriate for the following reasons. The landscape buffer requirement kinda anticipates a road construction for the project to access basically the center of the project. This project utilizes all frontage lots, so to keep in the neighborhood, none of the lots in the neighborhood have a hundred-foot setback, so we would like to eliminate that requirement so we look more like the abutting properties. Which is kind of the relief that is anticipated in the zoning, or, yeah, in the zoning. We are also requesting one waiver, it's to Article eleven, Section eight of the subdivision regulations, to allow us to install iron pins at the rear of the lots in lieu of granite bounds required. Um, lots six and seven are depicted with a shared drive. Uh, the shared drive would require a conditional use permit, excuse me, for the wetland buffer impact. Uh, we're kinda looking, uh, question to the board is should we apply for that conditional use permit at this time or prior to the driveway construction? Because we're just proposing the creation of a lot, not the building of a house. So that's one of the questions I had for the board. Um, the other one is basically if the board would like to do a sidewalk, we'd like to do that sooner rather than later, and take any questions the board has.
Thank you. Mr. Hannity, you've had a chance to kind of review the application a little bit more, um, I know you've submitted a staff review letter in regards to this, but in your opinion, do we have enough light, uh, information before us to act on the completeness?
Uh, yes, uh, I, I believe in short that we do, um, the applicant in the submittal asked for the one waiver, um, he is bringing up this point about the landscape buffer, which hadn't been mentioned and discussed in the application. But as noted, they're not creating a road. My first glance was that it didn't apply simply because of that. The board could see it a different way. So, that being said, I do believe that everything is here that's necessary to, uh, accept the application as complete.
Yeah, we can discuss the, uh, those items, I think, as we get into that for the case, um. Is there any further discussion from the board regarding, um, application completeness? If not, I'd entertain a motion. I'm sorry, I, I was, I was speaking to the board and asking them if they, if, if there's any further discussion on regarding application completeness, and if not, uh, entertaining a motion.
Chairman, I move to accept the application for case number twenty-two dash zero-one-one dash S U B. As complete.
Hold, hold second.
We have a motion by Mr. Anderson, a second by Ms. Anderson, uh, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all who's in favor, please say aye. And all who's opposed. Ms. Jones, are you voting?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Voting for or against?
For.
Okay, uh, motion carries, uh, six, uh, sorry, five, zero. All right, so, uh, would anybody like to make a motion regarding development of regional impact?
I'd like to make a motion that, um, case twenty-two dash zero-one-one dash S U B is of regional impact, Moore's Road stops in the town of Raymond, and there's approximately six cousins.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, just wanted to make sure we met the we do need to identify the communities that would be notified.
Raymond.
And if I may, we actually contacted Raymond, um, regarding this because we felt that that may, and actually, I think when I, at our initial hearing, we had discussed it, although I wasn't here. So we actually did contact Raymond, um, they did ask to see the plans, we have submitted them to the package that the board has, so, um, there's no permit to require, to request from them, but we will be talking to Raymond, and they have the package.
Okay. So I, I'll welcome discussion by the board on, on that, um.
Well, I think, I think this also allows, as a regional impact, it allows abutters that may be budding it in Raymond, not just the town.
I think we also have to be considered of, uh, the town of Nottingham and their, uh, their part in the, in maintaining this road in the future where it also, uh, goes through Raymond, and where is Raymond's, um, jurisdiction and what is their part in this.
All right, uh, just wanted to make sure we met the requirements of the RSA, that we've identified everything.
Yeah, I've had it written down, and it's
You have to be very specific.
Yeah, I would say it was transportation and, uh, transportation network or
So again, so we have the, the motion and the second, and we have the reasoning for the, uh, the finding and the abutters specified. Is there any further discussion? All who's in favor, please say aye.
Yes.
All who's opposed, um, motion carries four, one. So, um, so what development of regional impact indicates is it's, it's a separate process, so there's additional notification that has to go out. The Regional Planning Commission, which in this case is Stratford Regional Planning Commission, um, has to provide input, there, there's a whole process for it. Uh, we will notify, we'll send a portion of the minutes from tonight for at least this part of the meeting to those, uh, those parties to make sure that they can, um, take action. I think we for the sake of what we've done in the past, if it's beneficial, we have a lot of people here tonight for it, um, including the applicant, for the board to provide additional comment, hear some of that comment from the abutters, um, but knowing that we won't be able to take, uh, final action tonight on, on anything.
Mr. Chair, is Raymond Rockingham?
Yes. Yeah.
Up Stratford?
Sorry, I don't know. Raymond, I believe, is, but I believe it goes through
However, we're
Goes through our, okay.
I believe our, our, our Regional Planning Commission.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have not just Stratford County, I know that, I'm looking it up right now.
So if, if the applicant is, is, uh, amenable to us continuing conversation tonight, um, you know, to give you some input on, on what we see about the plan, some of this will be recorded in the minutes, and those will go to the, you know, the butters and everything. And we can also open the public hearing event tonight to get some comment.
Absolutely, we know this is not a one-meeting
Okay.
project, so, yeah, we can discuss, ask questions, you know, um, we'll answer as best we can. Uh, regarding the, uh, the regional impact, uh, will we be notified of, I mean, the last time, it's been a few years since I've done that, they had a meeting in, uh, Rochester, I believe, for Barrington, Rochester.
Yeah, so the, the Regional Planning Commission will post it. The last time, to be honest, uh, I believe they held it kind of remotely, or they
They chose not to.
They chose not to and just provided feedback, um.
The chair can choose to not convene the Subcommittee of S R P C if they don't administratively think that it's that significant.
So they may just provide
The staff will still, not me, it's another person, I don't have any role in it, because I'm here.
Right.
Will write the report, and you'll be provided with that.
Thank you. And I think one thing that would help, be helpful in the future, so I had looked through the abutters list, uh, when we had this, and Raymond wasn't listed as, on the list. Um, I think that would have been beneficial to have that in there, so this board would know that they were legally noticed and basically notified so that they had a chance to provide feedback, um, on their management and oversight.
We did notify the abutters in Raymond.
Yeah.
And we sent, not included in the, the abutter list, we sent them the package, actually, we sent them, you know, a dozen packages.
Okay.
But I can get a letter from Raymond just indicating that they've received it.
Yeah, and then they have comment. Obviously, so anytime a new subdivision is proposed and, and the primary access is from a road that is only accessible from another town, um, we just like to make sure that they have a chance to provide, uh, their input and
Absolutely.
We're not stepping on toes.
Um, so, uh, yeah, Raymond is actually in the Rockingham Planning Commission purview, so it would seem that they would be getting, doing the review. I don't know if S R P C would be. Well, yeah, I guess because it's in Nottingham.
Yeah, we're negotiated.
Yeah, so I guess you'll, will end up getting ten, you know, two feedbacks, feedback and two Regional Planning Commissions.
I would think that Raymond could also use Rockingham if they opposed to, for
We will make sure that Rockingham Regional Planning Commission gets notified as well, um, of the status, just to cross all the make sure everybody knows and that everybody has a chance to provide feedback. So, Mr. Hannity, I know you, you had your staff letter, the only thing I know is, I think, it marked out Cedar Road, I don't believe this is either capsule or
Sorry.
That's okay. Did you wanna address any of the items in there, and, and do you have chances? I don't know if you had a chance to see this, or
Yeah, I, I did, I received it, and go through it real quick again.
I can go through it.
Yep, no, so, um, yeah, as I mentioned in completeness, the only thing that, uh, they're asking for in terms of waiver was the, uh, iron pins and the granite bounds. Uh, with regards to comments on the subdivision itself, I noted, you know, the open space development, the one in reference, uh, and that also town council need to review, um, the language for the protected open space. Uh, the applicant's representative did answer a few of those questions about, uh, public access, who's gonna hold the deed, uh, maintenance, that sort of thing. It sounds like an H O A will be formed, and that'll be the entity. Um, a plan note fourteen on the existing conditions plan, if you could just clarify, you know, what the language is supposed to be, because on different plans, it's, it reads differently. Um, and I did ask about, um, the yield plan, open space development plan, um, do these, you know, the definition of lot, uh, envelope, building envelope, um, does exclude, uh, calculation purposes, excessive slopes in it, in excess of twenty-five percent, um, and wetlands by soil type. Uh, so, um, you know, I don't have the ability to do the calculations myself, so I wanted to find out, um, you know, if you could look into that.
Yeah, absolutely. We, we actually show on the C-twos and the sheets, the Yeah, absolutely. We, we actually show on the C2s and the sheets, the, the building envelope, or the, what do we call it, the building envelope area, which doesn't, I know for a fact it doesn't include the wetlands. I believe we excluded the slopes as well, but I need to double check that, and I'll get that information to you.
It seems a little clearer with the wetlands, but that there was no indication of slopes, right, and I can't, as I said.
Thank you. And then you had, you, you had had a couple of questions about conditional use permit and when to apply for that. So when it's regarding a subdivision, appropriate time would, would be as part of the subdivision process, if, if proposed lots would require to go through, so. And actually, open space is technically actually a conditional use permit as well.
Well, I was, I was confused, I'll be honest, I was confused about that because it does, it doesn't say in the procedures that you are required to submit for an open, or a conditional use permit, except for when you're altering the requirements of the open space, at least the way I read it. But we are requesting to alter the requirements of the open space, so we will need a CUP for that, but I don't know if we need a second CUP for just the open space.
And I, I know what you're talking about, the buffer specifically, the hundred-foot buffer specifically, reduction of that or elimination of it, that says it can be done through, through a conditional use permit.
Yeah, so if, I don't know if you're looking at, but under the procedure, it just says, you know, it's a subdivision, it goes through the subdivision application process, and then it says B is authorization to issue a conditional use permit, it doesn't say it's required for an open space development, or at least. If it, if it does, I missed it, which could be.
I think you're, um...
Was the interpret, is, is it not that the creative land use controls require, if you adopt a creative land use control, you're required, the processes isn't conditional use permit? Based in, based in the RSA, is that not how it reads?
I don't mind, I don't mind submitting one for.
Right, if you're a conditional use permit to modify the requirements of the section as follows. So if there's modification of the...
The zoning laws.
This modification of the the items that are in the conditional, in the open space subdivision, then we, we have certain areas where we have authorization to modify those through a CUP, a conditional use permit. So you're correct, you do not need a, in my opinion, you don't need a conditional use permit to move forward with an open space. It's if you want to make changes from some of these items in here, then you will need a for those specific items. Did the board have any, um, any items they'd like to address tonight?
I'd just like to bring up the fire chief's notes. From what I, I understand, he's looking for cisterns on both roads.
And you probably haven't received that letter yet, so it's standard practice with any application, that town departments review them, so the fire chief had provided a letter of feedback, I believe I saw it today. Requiring or, where he would request or require two cisterns, one on Jamsa and one on Moore's Road. We can get that to you. Respond towards that. We had a comment from Ms. Mooney, who's not here tonight. She just wanted to make sure that we are aware. She wears a second hat on the Conservation Commission, that the Conservation Commission has received a butter, um, concern and, and a testimony surrounding the pond on premise in, in the wildlife habitat. Believe I spoke to that correctly, is that, oh, yeah, okay, thank you.
I did have one question. So one of the purposes of the open space subdivision is to allow for workforce housing? And what's the plan?
We are not, so that is one of the roads you can go down for the open space, not a requirement. Um, we aren't, we're going to not do workforce housing. We're not seeking the bonuses that go along with it either.
And, if I may clarify, on, on the, on the plan, the area that's kind of west of Jamsa Trail, is it being proposed that that all be just donated, given as an easement to the town?
Well, no, that'll be in the right-of-way. So we're defining the right-of-way for both Jamsa and most of Moore's Land, because it, there's no right-of-way now. There's roads there that are town roads.
Right.
With no right-of-way, which is very odd. But, um, so we're defining the right-of-ways, and in, on the Jamsa side, because it's kind of skirts the northern property line, but doesn't, you know, if, if we created like a forty-foot right-of-way, we'd have multiple small pockets of property that didn't go with the lot. So instead of doing that, we propose to just define the east side as, you know, a twenty-foot offset from the road, but the west side to leave at the property line. So in the future, if the town decides to combine it with the, uh, a budding road and create one road access or something of that nature, then they have the right-of-way for it.
Okay, so...
And it doesn't leave weird parcels that have to, you know, go somewhere.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to understand, is, so the land that's on that side of what's delineated as Jamsa Trail, what, what parcel does that going to belong to?
It, it won't, it'll be in the right-of-way, considered right-of-way. So your right-of-way doesn't have to be fifty-foot wide, it can vary. So it won't be part of the parcel, it'll be just in the right-of-way.
Okay.
We can define it, you know, say forty-foot wide, and then say it's a non-buildable lot that's part of the homeowners association, but in the future, if the town decides to, you know, do something with Jamsa Trail, wants to, you know, increase the width of it or improve it and smooth out some of the, um, the curves, then they would most likely be outside of the dedicated right-of-way.
Right, I guess I'm, yeah, I'm not trying to be hung up or dense on that, but usually a right-of-way still falls over a parent parcel. So that's where I'm a little bit stuck, is to try and understand, you know, where would that be deeded besides saying it's a right-of-way, you know, it's usually a right-of-way over, you know, such and such parcel of land.
It would be deeded to the town.
They're not typically deeded to the town, it's just a right, the right-of-way is deeded to the town, or given to the town. The, the property under the right-of-way still typically belongs to the, the owner on either side of the road.
But it's a right-of-way.
It is a right-of-way, yes.
Right, okay.
So in this case, it would probably be to the HOA, the open space associated with the HOA would be the underlying owner, I guess, at that point.
And is that, is that area being included in the, in the open space?
No, we're not using it in the calculations, if that's your question.
Not used for any of the, okay, so, only the area I can, I hope. Is there any other board comments? Otherwise I can go through, I like, uh, have a list of items. Oh, I'll go through this. So we got that, got that. In my opinion, the initial yield seemed a bit high. Like to confirm that all the building envelopes shown are, are only inclusive of contiguous uplands, so like, for example, proposed lot six on the yield plan shows an area that's separate from the, like, where the, uh, where'd it go? If you look at the yield one, Y1 sheet, proposed lot six, there's a section that up at the front of the parcel, that's, that's probably showing that's contiguous, or uplands, but that's not contiguous with the area above, so I just want to make sure that that total isn't there, isn't included. Same thing with, I think, lot ten. And then any area of impingement, uh, make sure that any area of impingement of the lot is over seventy-five feet, and I think it's pretty close, but I think it's over for, again, lot six is an example. And then some of the building envelopes on some of the others, you get into some, some odd shapes, and so we want to make sure that those, those qualify. You already mentioned the conditional use permit that would be needed for any, any wetlands crossings, um, and there may be other lots involved in that as well. One thing I, one thing I know is, there's no, unless I'm missing it, I didn't see a wetland scientist stamp on here at all, but we'd want to make sure to confirm that these are poorly drained wetlands and not very poorly. That changes the setback amounts of fifty feet or seventy-five feet, which would also impact the yield. And also, there's a intermittent stream that goes through, that's shown on a few, on our wetlands maps, as well as a few different town, state maps, that goes through this parcel. I believe it's a, considered a class one, uh, so that would still apply to our stream protection ordinance, which imposes some additional, um, standards and requirements. On, on the plans that show any test pits for the 4K areas, uh, we require that two test pits be shown within that 4K area. There's some that only have one. So we need to make sure that those are, are cleaned up. You already answered that. Also, in our open space, we have minimum lot standards, minimum lot sizing of thirty thousand square feet and maximum lot sizing of a hundred and fifty percent, which in my opinion is forty-five thousand square feet, so there's a lot of these potential proposed lots that would be too large. You already mentioned the buffer that you likely seek a conditional use permit to, uh, eliminate that, especially where there's no internal road. Again, confirm again that within that proposed open space, that at least fifty percent of it, at least fifty percent of it or more is buildable, and that at least sixty percent of it is contiguous. I think you've got the contiguous part. It's making sure that the, uh, that what is there is, is actually buildable land. There's a few additional studies that may be needed, the environmental impact assessment, um, may be required by the board. Sometime we can take a vote on that, or we could seek Conservation Commission input, um, if you haven't met with the Conservation Commission yet. Given the sensitivity, the nature of, of this, I would recommend that be done. Um, we can also request a hydrogeological study. The grading and erosion plan, I believe you have for during course of construction at the end of the set, but I don't know if there's any plan for, um, or if there's any insight needed, or that what's proposed may require any additional, like stormwater structures and such. Just a reminder, underground utilities are required for new subdivisions. In our subdivision ordinance, we talk about utility easements and then roadway easements for the right-of-way. I think you mentioned that on the Jamsa Trail side, and I think you qualify for it on the, uh, Moore's Road. I believe you're proposing to dedicate that, so I think you've got those. That's, that's kind of my list of items. I kind of went through them fast, so.
Yeah, are you gonna, are you gonna, I tried to write down as many as I could, but...
Yeah, I can, what I'll do is, I'll provide that list to Mr. Lemieux so that we can include it in the minutes, since those are going to go out to the...
That's a lot.
The DRI anyway, I'll try to be helpful.
Yep, true. So a couple of items, yeah, the, in, um, we haven't met with CONCOM, um, but we are, um, we don't have any wetland impacts, for one thing. We have wetland buffer impact. So for that driveway between six and seven, um, so we will meet with them for our conditional use permit, to take that off of our, and we can discuss, obviously they'll discuss whatever they want to discuss, but we can discuss other things as well. Um, the, all the other items, I think we can handle.
Okay. Any other board comment, questions? Seeing none?
Quick, quick.
Yeah.
Can these roads be upgraded to meet a new subdivision regulation?
So as part of...
They won't, they don't meet the new, if they were doing a brand-new subdivision, these roads would not meet that new subdivision.
Right, so as part of, uh, part of any subdivision process, we can, there's off-site exactions and, and a thorough look at the road and what the additional needs may be for the additional capacity that would be required, could be something that would be included in our review. We would look for, uh, the town road agents' input on that. It's part of that process, but yes, that would be.
You, you also have to show need. So the, you have to, the board basically has to say that because we're, um, adding lots, that the road can't handle it, so we have to bring up, but you, you can't, it, it's not, you can't typically just say, well, I think it needs to be upgraded. You know, it has, you actually have to show the need and why that, you know, exists.
Yeah, as part of that, there's also, there's also, you know, anytime you're getting further away from the town center and everything, there's also a consideration for the board of, you know, if this is scattered and premature, or, you know, if we're beyond that point with, with this area. That would be something, you know, we would discuss either now or at a future meeting, I think, once we have some more, more information from everybody else. Are there any other, uh, questions? So, um, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearings. We did, so we did receive a lot of butter testimony, um, that we, the board just received kind of today. So we've had a chance, some of us had a chance to review the letters and, and go through, through some of the concerns there. Alls I would ask is that if you would like to speak for, please come up first. Against, or just have your own questions, come up after. Identify yourself, um, just because of the number of people here, we want to make sure everybody gets a chance to speak, and, um, if someone else has, has already said your thoughts, you still can come up and say, I kind of, I echo what they said, just so we can keep the, the meeting moving along for the sake of everybody. Again, this meeting, there will be no final actions on this application tonight with the development of regional impact finding. This has to be continued to allow for budding towns and, and regional planning commissions to, uh, provide comment. Would anybody like to speak for or against at this point? So, I'm sir.
My name is Mike Hayer. I live at twenty-seven Moore's Road. A number of, um, our current residents have concerns. First being the potential impact on the existing wells, aquifers, leach fields, and septic systems, particularly in the lots near the existing homes. The existing wells are not accurately mapped. Inspection indicates that the proposed seventy-five-foot well radii overlaps with existing well radii, especially where they're planning to put houses behind current houses. I believe an email was sent that showed some of those, um, accurate well placements, and I know another, uh, one of my neighbors said that their well was not where it was originally, and also overlaps with those. This would add stress to already stressed wells. We also have concern about potential impact on the road use. Ten homes means at least twenty vehicles. New construction would entail removal of trees and other vegetation. Those of us who live downhill from those sites have concerns over new runoff patterns. Grown pictures were sent, uh, of the existing pond, um, that even in the current drought conditions, that pond is larger than indicated on the maps that we saw of the, the, uh, proposed project. The pond is fed by streams that pass under Sacks Road and Jamsa Trail. It empties under Moore's Road, continuing on to Potuckaway Lake and the Lamprey River. We question that eleven two-acre lots are even possible without damage to the ecosystem. Potential impacts on the wetlands and wildlife would, are already made worse because Sacks, um, took all his trees down there, and the, that adjacent, uh, habitat is no, no longer available. We have a lot of animals in there, bears and deer and turkeys, um, that we're concerned about. Uh, it's our understanding that two building lots have already been approved further down Moore's by the same owner. Uh, also, also would impact the traffic. And those lots are in an area that are not maintained by the town, which I don't really understand any of that. Concern also by current residents regarding lake access for new homeowners. Currently, the only boat ramp is at the far end of Moore's Road, which means more traffic, and there is no parking area near that ramp. We don't know why homes couldn't be built up around the barn area. Would reduce the disruption of woods and wildlife and avoid putting lots behind current residents' property and running driveways between homes to access those lots. But also add houses without impacting the quality of life that the current residents have come to know. Also, the, uh, barn area has been used by Rob Dombrowski, doing business as Champion, for years. He's had machines parked there. Don't know if there's been any leakage of oil or, or fuels. Uh, don't know if those machines remain... Don't know if those machines remain contained there, but that seems like something that needs to be investigated.
Isn't that lot in Raymond?
No.
That part where he's parking is in Nottingham?
Yes. Yeah, Dombrowski, where the barn is now.
Right, I was talking about the part where you come down Moore's Road, there's the, it's a barn or whatever you want to call it. And there's an access that goes right there.
Right, that's where he parks all his equipment.
That's in Nottingham, not Raymond?
That, correct.
Okay. The line's a little vague and that's.
Yeah, could be. All right, that's all I have.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll accept any cheers or applause, it's just, it's just others indicating that some are, some are thoughts, so I appreciate the time. Is there anybody else that would like to speak either for or against, please come on up?
All right, hello, my name's Heather Aworsky. I'm at 104 Mountain Road. I did not receive an abutter notification, but I am indeed sort of in a butter. I also share a well within a butter with my neighbor who is here now. So I have serious concerns about this development, because it will directly impact my family in my neighborhood that I've grown to love. So I'm gonna start off with, this is an open space development. The spirit of the ordinance for an open space development for subdivision purpose is to protect the public health, safety, convenience, property, and general welfare of the people. I am not seeing how any of this subdivision fits into that category or this definition. I don't know how moving in 11 new houses, wells, septic systems, and 210, you know, cars coming in and out every day, which I'll get to, is going to protect our public health and safety, especially with our kids running up and down mountain road, dog walking, horses, you name it. Convenience, prosperity, general welfare, no. I'd love to hear that argument. 11 lots, I'm counting Jamsa Trail, because that's gonna directly affect me. The gentleman counted 10. But the study is that most homes have an average of two cars, 10 trips a day. That's 220 trips out of that tiny little Moore's Road right now, that just barely became a public road or a town road. But, you know, a little, little dirt road to a mountain road. Mountain road is already overused. I get trash piled up on my property every day from people going in and out of the park. I can't pull out of my driveway safely. I have two new drivers in my house, and we can barely pull out of the driveway because of traffic, because of the state park. And I can only imagine even more cars coming in and out on that road and using the lake. Especially if they don't live on the lake, they're gonna need access to the lake somehow, most likely the state park. Furthermore, if you go down connecting to 156 and 156 to 27, everyone knows you wait an hour before you can turn left. I can only imagine what that's gonna be like when all of these other cars are there, because it's already mind-boggling, the amount of traffic in such a rural area, which is why we live here. Open space, not sprawl. We're not looking for urban sprawl, we're looking for open space. You're looking at 11 lots, 10 that are consecutive next to each other. The only open space is because there is a pond on site, and there is no way to build on that pond. So there's no other application that will suffice but an open space application. And I don't even see how that pond is gonna be of public use or even maintained, or I still don't understand the plan of this open use space on how it's gonna be conserved. Where's the stewardship fees? Let's discuss that. What's the maintenance plan? Is the association gonna agree to this? Who's gonna upkeep it? Narrow lots, they're all narrow. Narrow lots equals congestion and privacy concerns. That is not as part of our ordinance, our zoning ordinance, or an open space ordinance. So I don't know how these lots consecutively next to each other have even got this far. Now let's skip to the groundwater level monitoring. I just looked, and the State of New Hampshire Geological Survey just listed the nearest bedrock well in Deerfield Nottingham Line. It is below normal as of July 2022. We all know we're in a drought. Every year it's getting worse and worse. It's not getting any better. What are, what are we gonna do? Right now, in our area, we're in a severe drought, never mind just that one bedrock well. Is there a groundwater recharge plan? Is there a hydro geological study? Are these steps going to happen and be required? We are disturbing environmentally sensitive areas. Not only is the lake nearby for erosion runoff from all this new construction, and definitely erosion from removing the trees and soil. What's the wildlife management plan? What's, where's our environmental impact study? How are we gonna preserve the natural features? That was not in the application, nor did I see any mention of it. Population, safety, traffic. We, we did the 200 trips a day. How is that the harmony of our plan? How is that safe transportation or safety for pedestrians, for bicyclists, safety access? It's kind of a, we don't want to build sidewalks, right? Because that takes away from being in a rural area in an open space. But then again, you add this many homes and this many people. You have to build sidewalks so we can use the road safely. So it's a conflicting issue. So I don't see how you're gonna move in this many families and have a safe, safety net for these children. Not to mention the school, the water, everything. The cisterns already got brought up. There are none on, in that area Nottingham. The closest one is down 156, going towards the town hall. So, I mean, I got a lot more to say, but that's to sum it up, to keep it brief. Yeah.
Appreciate it, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else that would like to come forward to speak for or against?
Hi, my name is Melissa Potter. I live at 82 Mountain Road. I'm in a butter in Raymond. And I'm gonna be a lot quicker, because I just want to echo everything I heard. I have mainly concerns about the water, the water table, the impact that it might have on my well, which I do share with 104 Mountain Road Nottingham, the wildlife, the runoff, the sound of like 11 houses, the change in the entire environment that, as Heather said, I love living there. I'm very, very concerned about the increase in traffic. I'm mostly concerned about the increase, I'm sorry, the impact on water and erosion and the wildlife. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else that would like to speak? For or against, please come on up. Again, we will be opening the public hearing again when we continue this application at that, at that meeting. But, so tonight's not your only chance to speak.
I'm Stacy Tennis. I live at 22 Moore's Road. My biggest concern is on the school. It's already a full school. There, that's a lot of families to bring in. It's only K through eighth. What about how the kids get into the bus stops? I mean, my daughter already had to walk almost a mile to get to the bus stop at the end. That's not safe. There's wildlife. It's just a lot. It's a lot on the whole community. So that's pretty much what I had to say.
My name's Craig Porter with 18 Moore's Road. I agree with everyone else, what they said, and I could repeat it, but I won't. What I'd like to say is I have a concern with the lot that's behind my house at 18 Moore's. I'm not sure what the number is. I would like to request that you change where the house will be in the well and the septic. It's awful close to mine, my well and my, my well, not my septic, but his septic is close to my well. And also, I would like to note that there is some sort of runoff stream back there that I, since I've been there, have tried to block, and it fills my backyard with water. I finally rerouted it, and as anyone on the road can tell you, there's now a ditch in front of my driveway where everybody has to slow down, which I actually appreciate. It's a speedball. But what I'm getting at is there is some sort of water coming down from behind my house and through my yard. But my main concern is also well and the septic. It's just awful close to my, my well, his septic.
Yeah, town, town maps and state maps show that there's a first-order intermittent stream that goes from the western side, so originating west of Jamsa Trail onto the other lots that are not part of the subdivision plan, proceeding through this parcel, continuing on down towards South Road, somewhere in that area. So that's actually technically a first-order stream by our definitions, by the state definition. So it's just intermittent.
It floods my yard, yeah, every, every spring, and that's why I finally just put it off to the side, and now everyone has to slow down when they pass my house.
So those are, those are protected, protected under zoning, but that was one of the items I had mentioned to the applicant to look at, make sure it gets listed on here and gets addressed.
I think what I'd request is if you could just change that lot, make it a little bigger, put the house and the well and the septic on the other side of the lot, not behind the houses that are right there. Because my other concern as a real estate appraiser is the house in my backyard is gonna affect my value big time. These other houses aren't affecting my value that much, but these houses will affect my value. When I have a, when someone looks at my house and they go to the country, "We want a nice country lot," and you have a country lot with a house in your backyard, you know, it's gonna affect my income, my, the value of my property. And he has plenty of room to push that back so it's not in our backyard, because I'm not the only one. My neighbor will also be affected. That's all. Thank you very much.
And I am gonna ask, I appreciate the applause as a way to show general support, but I'm gonna ask that we hold that off for the rest, for the rest of the meeting, please. Out of respect for the applicant and everybody else, in case there's someone here that would like to speak against or the opposite way.
Yes, hi, my name is Jason Manini. I, my property is 24 Moore's Road. I will echo everything that I've heard in, recently before me, but I would like to support, my property is probably the smallest one on the map. And my well is in the back, so to echo Craig's concerns about the positioning of the property, that thing is gonna be, I mean, it's already gonna have to be a driveway going through, but it's, it's gonna be right on the back corner of our property where our septic and our, our well is. I've also, I'd like to note, we're, we're just summer residents, but we've been here for five generations. My grandfather built it back in the 50s, so I'm very proud that it is a family heirloom, and this is where I spent my summers as a kid. I have my son, my niece, my nephew. We all share it. Since the improvements on the road, traffic has gotten really fast. It's a bad part of the turn. Thankfully, most of my neighbors and other residents are pretty mindful of where we are. I put out a little "slow kids" sign. But the mailman, UPS driver, guests, I mean, there's people that go 25, 30 miles down that road. You really shouldn't be going more than 12 or 50, especially it's dirt road, it's a bottleneck. There's a hill that goes down and a dog legs to the left. So there's a lot of visibility issues, and when cars are going that fast, we had somebody that slammed on their brakes, and literally the skid marks would go halfway through this office. It was drastic to see how, because we just yelled, "I'm just slowing down," and slammed on this brake. That's how fast it was going. So I do have concerns about the positioning of the property, but also the safety of my kids and all the pets that live in the area.
Do you have a dug well or a drilled well?
I believe it's a drilled well.
You're, just, you current map, 7 July 8, is that the one you're referencing?
I am the little corner on right up.
All right, thank you.
In a holding tank or a septic tank?
I think it's a holding tank. I'm not exactly sure.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak for or against, or have journal questions? And I don't know if there's anybody still in, in room two, like to make your way down. If you have questions, comments, that you'd like to speak during the public hearing, please come on down. But just.
A builder tie-in, where these houses are all gonna be built at once? Or is he just selling, does he just want to sell the lots off individually? Are we gonna have to deal with construction all at once?
I don't know what the plan is. We can, I can, we can ask that, but I don't know what the plan is for that. That wasn't addressed yet.
And my other concern would be that it's a strip of lots.
Any other additional comment at this point? Seeing none, I'm gonna.
I have one question. Have the written comments, can it have a part in the record?
It will be, yeah. And I'm sorry, sorry, your name?
My name is Doug Zensky, 21 Jamsa, I have a lot two, just next.
Thanks so much. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing for now. It will be reopened at a, at a future meeting. I'll invite Mr. Geiger back up to the table, and then if you would like to address any of that, he's welcome to. Otherwise, is there additional comment or questions from the board? Now we can try to bring that up too, before we continue on.
I'll, I'll quickly address the wells and the septics. Those are both regulated by the state. We'll follow all the state requirements and meet all the state requirements regarding that. The number of lots, the, the town has set the zoning for this area, and we believe the zoning allows for 11 lots. So just like every person that owns property in Nottingham, they have the same rights as the owner of this property, to develop his property to the extent that's allowed by zoning. So that's all I can say.
Yeah, and I think some of that goes back to my question about just recalculating that, make sure that the yield is, is accurate. And I do think if it's high, elimination of some of those lots further down the road would probably ease a lot of, I'm hearing of concern, because it would, it would remove the direct impact to, you know, direct abutters.
And just one other thing, the, the plan does show like locations for houses, septics, and wells. Those are locations that are possible, just to show that we can put the house, well, and septic on the, on the lot. That doesn't necessarily mean the location, specifically the one that we're talking about.
Lot nine, lot ten?
Lot nine. They, they may face the pond, you know, during, you know, once, once the builder decides or the homeowner decides where to put the house, it may face the pond instead of the road.
Yeah, I think you did have to show the 4K, maybe it would be met somewhere else on that. And then just looking at that, on C2, the lot ten, the well radius, the, the actual label for the well got lost underneath the label for the lot number. You got the circle?
Yeah, I think we, yeah.
Is there any further questions or comments from the board?
One of the abutters that mentioned had a question about, and I don't know if you even have any feel for this or about as to how this proposed development might, might.
No, I mean, no, I, I don't have any input, just because, you know, he could decide to sell it to all one builder who will build them all in a row, or he could decide to sell them, and it, you know, it's his prerogative to sell them however he likes to, or not.
Mr. Eady, I'm sorry.
Yeah, please, I, I just want to get some clarification, because it might be that the same dashed line is serving two purposes. But when you show in your yield plan, the dashed yellow line, is that also the, the extent of the buildable area, like the intersection of the buildable, buildable area?
So the dashed yellow line is setback, a well setback?
Well, it's setback, but is it also the extent of the buildable area as well?
So like, for example, this right here. So that line represents the buildable area.
That line represents the setback. So yeah, if this area is buildable area, that makes.
Yeah, but if you have a building, it will be of 47,000.
Right.
Is that this?
That, yeah, that, I'll double-check that, so I don't want to say yes or no until I double-check it. But yes, I believe that is correct.
If most of the time in the back, you couldn't see the, yes, I had the same question, is that, is that supposed to be the back part of the buildable area?
Sure.
Because I, I wasn't, I wasn't seeing any of the lines on the hot.
And that's something, and that, that line was also kind of what made me question the, what the, the total like proposed open space area is.
Right, and we can always hatch it or something, you know, in the next iteration to more.
There's a line to it that shows, or a, a label to it.
Yep.
There's a quick look, when you look at that, where that, all the wetlands are and their setbacks and such, it looks like there's more non-buildable area in the open space than there is buildable area. So, if we can get, just to get that calculation somewhere. And again, I'll be sure all my notes are summarized for the minutes, so that when those go out to yourself and then the funding communities, they're all, they're all listed out for you.
Totally.
Those go out within five days, I believe by statute.
Chairman, I, I took a drive down both of Jamsa and, and Moores to look at this, and I think, I think we need to do a site walk. I have concerns about the condition of both roads, with potential, potentially there's traffic on it. Also, if the fire chief is requesting cisterns on both roads, I'd, I'd like the chief's input on where those cisterns would be located. These are both narrow roads, both, Jamsa is, Jamsa is a steep road, and it's very narrow. But I think it would be, I think it would be valuable for all of us to go down and walk this property and see it. It's, it's a drought time right now, but there's a whole lot of wet flow on this property, even on this road. So I, I, you know, I don't know when we do that site walk, but I'd like to be able to do a site walk on this.
Yeah, I think we can either schedule that, you know, now for a future date, or the future meeting, if, up, up to the board. There, I would recommend, just to have, to cover all bases, I'm assuming the applicant's probably going to be meeting with the Conservation Commission, that we just extend, you know, an invite to them if they, if we do schedule one, as well as.
I'm just wondering too, I mean, if we, if we schedule the site walk now, then we, when we at least notify the town agreement, we have a date that they know that there's a site walk, is that always rocking that, if we schedule a date now, and it's one weather and it's not, it's just others doing it?
That's a good idea.
Yeah. I can entertain a motion for that, I don't know, so in general, we, we ought, well, during the summer, when the, the days are longer, we'll often schedule sit walks on Wednesdays, like, at like 5:30, usually provides enough time to walk a, a larger parcel. Otherwise, we could do Saturday, we try to be cognizant of everybody's time, and weekends, board, applicant, and the Butters alike. So, for Wednesdays, we have, next Wednesday would be too soon, the Wednesday after that, we have our next planning board meeting, it's a workshop. We could look at like probably the 31st, or September 3rd, which is going into holiday week, I believe. I might be wrong, September 3rd is probably the wrong date, but, so I'd look at probably August, August 31st would be open, you know, Mr. Guyer, is that the date?
Yeah, you guys make a date, and I'll, we'll be there.
Now, we just recommend 5:30, 5:45, where this is located, to make sure people can get out of work and get there.
Yeah, and I think we should probably figure out where we, we would park.
Where we park, yep.
There's not much for parking, so either park, I don't know where we park and maybe park.
Well, is there, so where, in the current spot where the, I guess people are referring, referencing it as a horse barn, which is a lot.
I have to confirm that, but I'll look for you to make sure that it's, I mean, has a winter.
Oh, okay.
To make sure that that is acceptable, and I'm assuming that it is.
Is there, and is there parking general in that area more than along the road?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I, I'd say we go with that plan, and if it's not minimal, let us know.
I'll let you know.
And then we can update the, the notice for it.
Yeah, and I think if, and I don't know if it goes all the way through, but it looks like once you get down to that, um, the, once you get down into the houses, it looks like there's a wood trail, I don't know if it's on this property or not, but it also, it looks like when you're on Jamsa Trail, I mean, it's in a barrier, it looks like there's a wood trail, I don't know if there's a connecting wood trail to that. That, yeah, so I'm thinking if we could walk down Moores and, you know, and then cut through that wood trail, we could back out on the Jamsa, and that would be a good, good move to do.
Yeah, so, do we have a motion and a date, time specific?
Want 5:30 or quarter of?
I think quarter of, please.
Quarter or six.
Just because this is, first, we'll get it.
If I make a motion that we schedule a site visit on August 31st, at 5:45 PM, so that we notify the, the later Conservation Commission, the agreement, and our community.
Second, we have a motion by Ms. Anderson, and second by Mr. Anderson, to conduct a site walk on August 31st at 5:45 PM, is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 5-0. Again, if you can't make it, as a planning board member, please just email us so we know ahead of time. That is open to the public, you won't receive in a Butters notice for that, all notices went out for this already, as opposed to, there might be some more with the DRI impact part, but from this point on, any, any continuance is just mentioned at the meeting, and then is posted on the agendas for, for future dates, just to let everybody know.
Mr. Chairman, can I just clarify regarding the notices? The discussion before, do the CUPs need to be re-noticed, because we're going to have a CUP for this, at least one? The conditional use permits for?
I think it's, I think it's safe to do so, just to avoid potentially, just missing it. I'm going to reach out to, to others to see about that process, again, the RSA is not super clear on it, it's a newer process for us, so I apologize that we're still, still learning it, at all, for this, for the time being, I think it's safer to notice it, and then we hope to potentially avoid that in the future, if we don't have to do that. Okay, so, and again, we'll be meeting at, we'll figure out the map and lot number of the current horse barn, unless that doesn't work off the applicant.
That's actually on Moores Road.
It's on Moores Road, yes.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion for tonight? If not, motion to continue would be in order. We'd be looking at September, whatever the date was, prior one, two.
14th?
September 14th, yep. As long as that date works for the, for the applicant.
It does.
I could, depends on what it is, but you can, go ahead.
Is that a question about the shape of lot number seven? Here's a, there are two very small pieces of land packed by, very thin, just to make it all still under a four acre lot. As meeting time, David Ken, I'm 36, 11.
Okay, alright, thank you, yeah, so, so that'll probably be, I'll address the, I'll answer that, the applicant's here, you can correct me if I'm wrong. So that's on the yield plan, you know, they were showing that as being part of a proposed lot seven of the yield plan, so a yield, for any open space development that's proposed, to get the number of, of lots that they may be able to, to build, they have to, they're required to show a yield plan, which would be, if, if it wasn't an open space, it went through current zoning, regular subdivision plans, how many lots they could get, and that's where the, the discussion starts with the open space side, so on the, what they're proposing to move forward with is the open space development, in that section there becomes, becomes part of the open space, so the, the section that would have had the, the dog leg over, and then you get lot 10, proposed lot 10, that does not have that extra section, so that would all be open space from that point on.
Thank you very much for that, I, I am concerned, I'm very familiar with the, quite a ridge, quite a slope up to the ridge on the map, so I look at basically show possible septic, which is, built into the ridge, so I'm, I'm going to be very, very interested in this, you know, sort of.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to address that at the next, the next meeting, but I appreciate the, the comment, just because we closed the public hearing for tonight. It's worth a stage of continuance for, anybody like to make a motion to continue to September 14th, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Guyer, does that date and time work for you?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we continue case 22-001, S U B, this September 14th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Anderson, a second by Ms. Jones, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, so again, thank you, everybody, tonight. This case will be, again, back in this room, September 14th at 7:00 PM, meaning that's when the agenda starts, and then the site walk will be on August 31st, and no additional notices will go off for those.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. With the right show, Mr. McKinnon has rejoined the table and will be resuming his role as a vice chair and a voting participating member. Next on the agenda is case number 22-012-DR, application from Barry Surveying and Engineering on behalf of James Furnold People's Trust, requesting a design review for building a private road in two, two lot subdivision, property is located on Deerfield Road, identified as tax map 52, lot 4-2. Mr. Barry, if you don't mind, if you want to wait a minute, just, I know people are clearing out, so if you hear, that just gives an overview of what you're proposing, and we'll connect.
So, Mr. Chair, members of the board, again, for the record, my name is Christopher Barry with Barry Surveying and Engineering. We had a design review hearing on this parcel for Joe and Don earlier this year, I requested a second design review, we now have additional information, and I wanted to just work through one more additional time with the board procedurally, how we intend to move forward with the subdivision. So this is a large parcel of land that's off from Deerfield Road, it's currently owned by Jim Furnold and his wife, who, Joe is their son. There's an existing house that sits out close to Patuckaway, and there's a long driveway that goes out to that existing house. The proposal is to create a private road using your subdivision regulations, there's an ordinance or subdivision regulation that allows for a private road to be developed in certain circumstances. We would develop a private road, physical right-of-way or road around the existing driveway that's there. I've, we've now surveyed the roadway, so we know how wide it is in certain areas, it's about 15 feet in width, to meet the life safety code, we would propose to widen that to 18 feet with a foot of shoulder on each side, so we had a 20-foot possible section. Since the design review, again, and due to the survey work that's been completed, we've located sort of the best area on site to install a proposed cul-de-sac, or turnaround for, again, life safety vehicles, and off from that cul-de-sac would be a proposed driveway, there's an existing woods road and trail that sort of meanders out to the town beach currently, and so the applicants are looking to utilize that existing trail generally in its location to gain access to a buildable area, again, out on the point next to the lake. The existing house would have 200 feet of frontage that's created on, on the proposed cul-de-sac, and would create a nine acre lot around the existing house and homestead area, and then Joe and his wife would retain the remaining parcel. The, one of the things that came up at the prior design review hearing is, and I believe it was the chairman that brought it up, the, the regulation discusses three lots, and originally we were proposing two. I, I think at the time, we indicated, for purposes of satisfying the regulation, if the board thought it was necessary, we would show and propose three lots, there's certainly no reason not to have the third lot, we could meet standards, and most likely that lot would go to likely the next generation Furnold line. So we wanted to discuss a couple of things, first, we've shortened the roadway, I'm sure the board doesn't have any objection to that, we're now showing the third lot in the design review concept, we would prove that out and provide a proper subdivision plan for the project, of course, and then lastly, based on where the existing road, woods road is that's going to be used or, or modified for a driveway use, there are two sections that likely go through the 50-foot wetland setback, and would require a conditional use permit for those areas. As you can see, in one of the areas, it's relatively unavoidable, we have two small pockets of wetlands, when you overlap the 50-foot radius, it sort of touches the, the driveway, we would propose to center that the best we can, both on the proposed lot and also within that little thin piece of area outside of the buffer zone, so that least amount of impact would be generated as possible inside of that. And then in a second area, there's a larger wetland that is a pocket, it's not a vertical pool, and currently the logging road sort of cuts through the tip of the wetland, in that particular section, we would propose to move the driveway outside of that well and outside of the buffer zone. As of today, we have additional wetland mapping, topography that we've picked up, to, to know for a fact that we are then not getting any closer to an additional well on that side, so we do have that additional information that we now have, and we would prepare as part of the final package. The last thing that we wanted to discuss with the board is the private road regulation discusses the, not the need, but the, acknowledges the fact that in certain circumstances, waivers to roadway standards are applicable, in this particular case, the applicants would be requesting that the board waive a few of their general roadway standards, whereas this is not proposed to be a town road. We also understand that a private road agreement, private road maintenance agreement would have to be developed, and that these three lots would be legally bound, and that the town has no responsibility for, for, in the future, so the applicants are fully aware of that, accepting of that. So, things like, you know, pavement, things that would be part of a typical road cross section would not be proposed as part of this, and we would request to that. The only other waiver that I would foresee that we would be requesting would be full topo in wetlands site, what we have not already provided topo for and wetlands for is a large, large wetland system that connects to the lake, we have flown the site with survey drones so we can provide additional data in that way and methodology, but would not be true topo in the sense, but we would provide ample topography and wetlands in the area. As of tonight, I've asked to meet with the Conservation Commission, I understand that they meet the second Monday of the month, so we would meet with them, hopefully the second meeting, September for, for its full review of a full application package for the project. I guess with that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you have, and sort of glean any insights that you might have, so that we can finalize the application.
Much, I appreciate that. I'm going to have the staff first, if there's any specific questions or anything you have, your advice, for the, to the board for, for discussion, again, design reviews are not binding, but more formal, that's why the plan is not all drawn out, like, well, the whole application would be, but allows us to guide the applicant before they pass further process.
You know, honestly, I summarized it, and tried to identify, or, no, tried to identify the, the regulation 15.4, that'd be referenced for this private road, and then some of the points that Chris has brought up, he brought up from the conversation that we have, I was asking him about this, and I put that information in here, but he's already talked about it. That's mostly the second paragraph. The one thing I did think about, though, now, just because of the previous applications is, is there, I haven't found anything in the way of segmentation, or, because this is a rather large lot, and it now has a new road. I haven't found anything in the way of segmentation or if, because this is a rather large lot, and it now has a new road, which would imply that additional lots can be pulled off of it. It is there, um, and it needs to be considered, uh, I'm just asking, telling the board to consider anything that, uh, a major subdivision which required, if they were to come in at a fourth lot or more, um, and then anything in the way of segmentation, um, or environmental impact, um, stormwater management, things like that.
Yeah, sorry, I can speak to that if you'd like. So, we have, we have considered that. That's been part of a major discussion we've had with, uh, the applicants and clients. The, the, I want the board to understand, the point of this is not to create, today's point is not to create a subdivision. It is to create a family compound for them all to live, sort of on the same piece of property, understanding that intent as of today is irrelevant for the future. Um, I think the ordinance specifically speaks to that, um, and specifically says that in the event that there is future development or subdivision to take place on the private road, that the board then is charged with reassessing, uh, the road's suitability for that, um, whether it generates for a future, uh, major subdivision, stormwater impacts, et cetera, et cetera. So, we have considered that, um, as part of this application, and it's one of the reasons that we're trying to sort of keep this as small as possible. We've already recommended to the client's attorney that we, in our maintenance agreement, our road right-of-way agreements, that, uh, these types of things are discussed, uh, so that any future owners, if it's not the Furnolds, know that future development on this roadway is sort of re-subject to reconsideration.
That's what I was gonna get at, is, so Blair, under the subdivision regulations, fifteen point four for private roads, we do, it discusses it slightly. Subsection three gets into, uh, if the road's ever to be considered, it pretty much, we, this road is a starting point. The discussion on road conditions will be discussed at that time. But then subsection four literally reads it as a policy of the town that no private road will be accepted as a town road unless it's designing construction meet the standards set forth in this article. So that's that, seen it town, well, what we used to be town meeting many times, is there used to be that condition to bring it up to full subdivision standards, so. And that, that was actually, one of my points is almost gonna be, on whatever plans you guys come up with, it'd be good to have notes to that such, almost referring to this and summarizing that, that's the intent, but I think with that, it kind of-
Regurgitating that on a recorded plan is-
Right, so it's, like you said, fifty years from now, somebody can see, well, this is what the intent was, and all parties kind of discussed it, so.
Yes, I think that, that section specifically kind of has a checklist of items that would, you'd wanna just be very cognizant of, and trust each, each following up in, I would say, in the application. I think it's pretty, pretty clear on that part. Um, my only quick, quick thing is, it says two lots of it, technically, it's gonna be three, three, because it includes the parent parcel.
Yeah, I thought I updated my application, but maybe I did, and maybe I'm reading. It was note, I think it-
Oh, one new lot to total, but it's, yeah, so it'd be considered three lots of the vision. Um, you're, you're already aware that, and you mentioned it, any wetlands disturbance would, would require, uh, conditional use permit, uh, application. As we said tonight, it's easier to include that in your application than it is to do it afterwards, because until we get clarification, if you have pre-notice, um, right in there, we can notice it at some time.
I also wanted to, you were mentioning a C U P for the purpose of buffers a couple of times tonight. The C U P is for impact to the actual wetland, right? Not buffers of the way.
I think it's for the buffers.
Because I read, our section, our zoning ordinance said, you know, that's why we created the C U P was for the, because the zoning ordinance read no impact to the wetlands, and then we regurgitated that.
We'd wanna look at that, uh, a little more clearly, just to make sure.
Yes, as condition use for, maybe granted by the planning board for construction of roads, other accessways, pipelines, power lines, and other transmission lines, areas designated as non-critical wetlands. So we've always interpreted that as the wetland itself, so I guess my inter, I just wanted, and I know it was mentioned a couple of times tonight, I guess my interpretation has always been, there's no need for a C U P for a buffer impact. In the past, we've, if driveways have gone through a buffer, we've just discussed it as, show the driveway and we'll discuss its relativity to the wetland, so. I just want, there's no need for those C U Ps, I'm sure that-
Yeah, I was looking at that myself tonight, but then I was reading, um, uh, like, the, so the buffer or whatever it is, structures and so.
Right, we have a twenty-five foot no disturb vegetated buffer. Um, vegetated buffer is not eligible for conditional use. But there's that, that twenty-five to fifty, or twenty-five to seventy-five is actually kind of like a case-by-case basis review of the board, so I, I don't think there would be, I just wanna discuss that. I don't think there would be a need for a C U P, as long as you'd impact the wetland. I know that's always the goal, not to impact it, so.
Yeah, so that's sort of where I got hung up in that ordinance is.
It, it just says-
I can't touch the twenty-five foot without a Z B A action. I know I can't be in the wetlands without a C U P, but what happens between twenty-five and zero, or twenty-five and fifty?
Good question. So, I, yeah. August twenty-fourth, let's discuss that.
Yeah, and I, I, the, the wetlands, I think you're speaking of are designated as critical wetlands, right?
They're not, no, no.
If they're any of the, of the bigger section, um.
Yeah, I'd be sure to, uh, review all of your local maps before we start a project in time.
Five under the, well, conservation areas. In that section, can, can, everybody can continue on with questions or, uh, items?
I had a couple. Um, I think I might have missed this in your intro, trying to search for my mess up here. So on the parent, I guess I call it the large parent parcel that's to remain, and your, the intent there is to use the trail, um, for the driveways. The intent to get that house down kind of in that wedge where the setbacks, okay?
Yep.
And that trail, I remember seeing it, it's, that's not a public use trail, right? It's just there?
It's like a forty-plus locking.
Okay, yeah, because it was, I remember walking across the bridge, and I was like, oh, that's a nice continuation, but then I saw that it was logged, and there's no way you could even walk it at that point. Okay, I was, I was just curious about the public verse. Um, and then the only thing I know is the cul-de-sac. Would there be an intent to, I, it'd be a private road, in my mind, that gives it some protection as a road. Is there any intent to construct some degree of a turnaround? It might already, there is, okay.
There's kind of one there.
There's kind of one there, and that's why it's, the road has been moved since our original design review, because there's, there's a sort of a lay-down area that's there now.
Is that like where that, like, tree line kind of kicks in?
Yeah, and if we weren't looking at a two-hundred scale plan, it would look a little larger.
Okay.
Um, we would, we would actually construct something so that a, a proper fire truck could turn around and-
Gotcha. And, and just for the condition use permit, I'm sure you, you, I'm sure you'll read through the whole section as to what's required, but there's a mention about a surety that, uh, prior to the granting of a permit on the, on the section, permanent security to ensure that all structures carried out in accordance with an approved sign. I guess be ready to talk about that or address it.
So it'd be surety of the area with, within the confines of the condition of use permit?
That would be my, I guess.
If a condition of use permits.
Right. But we've, uh, get some answers on that. I don't, I don't believe there's, uh, as Mr. McKinnon pointed out, just rereading through this, I don't see that the, um, that the setbacks or buffers are a part of our critical wetlands, um, uh, sorry, our wetlands, conservation area.
Mr. Barry brought, good point, though, there, re, reading that regulation is, in fact, oh, I put it right there. Um, and this, we can discuss this as a board at that business meeting, but, um, there's a twenty-five foot no disturb buffer, which we then say you cannot get a C U P.
Right.
Oh, I see what you're saying, so then if, if this is not a Vernal Pool study, I gotcha, I missed that one. So we might be okay there. As long as it's not a Vernal Pool, you're good.
Yeah, and Deidre has done a study earlier this spring. Uh, none of these critical areas that we're looking to develop are Vernal Pools.
Gotcha.
Um, that's not to say that the large marsh doesn't have that habitat, but we're trying to stay as far away from that as possible.
And I'm sure you're, you're well aware of, and will be mindful of, any, uh, shoreline water, a lot of the-
Yes.
Radius that you might be outside of it, and, uh-
Yes, so, so we have the one hundred foot that, uh, we're locally bound to, and then there's other, I think we all know there are other state regulations that we have to adhere to also. That's right, whether the purpose of surface coverages and waterfront buffers, et cetera.
And, and so the post-total length of the cul-de-sac, did he have it twelve hundred?
Fifteen hundred. Fifteen hundred as well. Fifteen to the neck.
And what is the additional length of the driveway or where?
Uh, it's at least that long.
Another fifteen feet.
At, at least.
It looks like an equidistant.
And then I don't see anything in our, I don't see anything within our zoning or planning ordinance, uh, regulations specifically that discuss driveway length. I think that gets back into the code and fires safety.
Right.
So there may be additional things that they can require. I, again, I didn't see anything specifically in our ordinance as that, that limit on the road, um, or anything like that, so.
I think in this case too, it's an existing, kind of exists as it, so it's-
The current house. Maybe go on to that, fifteen feet.
That other one, I'm thinking. So really it gets into N F P A one and, and chapter eighteen?
Yep.
And, and width, and, but we would, we would show the board that we would meet those rules, would just show an arbitrary design.
I think, I think a lot of times what they require, Johnny's, it's required, and then that, uh, again.
Look, this is also a case-
Quit providing, I'm sure, and, and building inspector, if there's anything there.
Look, this is also a case that there's a dry hydrant.
Right there.
Right there, so, I know that's generally a question, so, or the lake.
Or the lake.
Or the biggest cistern we can get in the area.
You know, like, all these, uh, you, you addressed everything, or mentioned that you plan on addressing the rest of the items for us. You're obviously supposed to show that that first lot is buildable.
Of course.
I think, I think that, where you addressed why the, uh, you know, why this doesn't, prior to meeting, doesn't qualify for a backlot, it's just my frontage, but.
Right.
Uh, does the, all right, let me step back, let me ask a question, ask it as a question instead. What you're showing as the roadway is, um, the, a, a proposed right-of-way?
So.
And then within that will be the actual road?
Yeah, so this was sort of discussed as part of another application earlier tonight. There are two different ways you can view roads. A road right-of-way where the fee or ownership of the land is owned by a landowner, and a public entity has a right of way over it. In this particular case, or in the case of new subdivisions where we create new roads, the fee to the land will be separated, so that everybody in this subdivision has an interest in that fee to the land. Or one person owns the fee to the land, and everybody else has the right to utilize it. So it's different than just showing, like, in our right-of-way over one piece of property to another. This is going to be developed as a true road with right-of-way.
Um, so, if that's the case, we do have a setback from the property line of driveways, never mind.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
Something we've discussed, though.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I started with questions. Uh, okay, there were-
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't defined a setback yet for new roadways.
For roadways, yes.
And so, and they, we have, we do have one for driveways, that, you know, we're both leaving some buffer between this parcel and a letting parcel of, of long distance.
It looks like they're covering it, and it, it's a basic layout, it's the same layout.
Yeah, what, what's really hard to see from this design review plan is that right-of-way is almost eighty-five feet.
Right, right.
So it's, you know, a standard roadway is fifty feet, it may be sometimes sixty feet in some industrial situations, but this is really wide, because I was trying to create as much standard geometry as I could around the driveway that's there now.
It's pretty much cut to that already, right? It's pretty much the tree line.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, I think you've got the sections of the roadway, what waivers or what things to request are there to show, um, you've got the, the use permit piece, and everything else, I think you've addressed it, and I think this would, again, three lots, road versus two as a driveway.
Yep. Okay, great.
Very further discussion on this? Uh, I'll open a public hearing. There are a few people out in the room. I don't know if there's, generally on design reviews, we don't have to take public comment, but I'll welcome some if there's anybody that'd like to come up. Mr. Barry, don't have to move, so. Seeing none, I'll, I'll close this public hearing. Um, all right, Mr. Barry, we have, uh, so with design review, you're off, you have the offer for, I could, on continuance of it, I think it's sixty to eight or something, do you feel like you'd need that?
Nope, no, sir, I think we're ready to, uh, compile the final application.
So I'd accept a motion, if you'd like, to make one to close the design review.
I'll make a motion to close the design review for case number twenty-two dash zero one two dash D R.
One second.
Good, motion by Mr. McKinnon, a second by Ms. Anderson. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Carry six zero, uh, this interview's closed. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, uh, that's it for actual cases. We do have, um, two conceptuals, uh, believe, the first one on the agenda is a conceptual of case review, uh, Mr. McMahon. Have anybody here for that? Conceptual applications are, are, are very high-level, uh, non-binding, back-of-the-napkin kind of thing, where, just to give some general guidance, for napkin before they invest in a design review or, or application.
Sure, so I'm Ben McMahon. I live at twenty-two K Hill Lane in Nottingham. Um, I didn't bring my napkin to draw on, but, uh, I thought we'd just discuss. Uh, my parents purchased, so I'm here on behalf of my parents, Vincent and Georgia McMahon. They purchased lot sixty-five, uh, I don't remember the map number, but it's on Cove Road, eighteen Cove Road. Um, it's a vacant lot. Um, we have a, approved, uh, shoreline permit to build a home there, uh, but with the housing, um, prices to build a house right now, we're not doing that. Um, so, so one way, uh, that, that we thought of to offset the, uh, property taxes that they're paying was to put my camper van there and rent it to, uh, short-term renters. Um, uh, this would, this would be similar to, uh, how we rent Airbnb, VRBO houses, uh, around town, um, only that it is a recreational vehicle, self-contained, with black and gray water tanks that will be emptied appropriately. Um, the season would be from, uh, May to September typically, and I wouldn't expect to have people there more than three, four days a week. And, uh, and that's the concept.
What was the address again on that?
That's eighteen Cove Road.
So that actually would come down to where the boat launch is.
It's on the corner of the boat launch.
Behind Annie's house.
Yeah, it's on the corner of the boat launch and Cove Road.
And a little history, um, which I should go, on Cove Road, uh, it was lot twenty-one, there's two red chads. Richard Strang owned that for years, thirty years, thirty-plus, and he always had a fifth wheel sitting down there. He helped on the weekends and used it, did everything like this. So technically, I mean, the lot right across the street did the same thing for thirty years. He's just putting a fifth wheel on there, so I don't see why this, what you do with your fifth wheel is up to you.
Yeah, and it's also a twenty-two foot Ram camper van. It's not a, not a big, uh, key.
So we, so thirty foot, I have twenty-eight foot. So we don't specifically currently in our zoning, we don't specifically by name or anything else, allow short-term rentals, Airbnb, VRBO, or any of those things. We do specifically have in the zoning, um, regulations surrounding motorhomes and travel trailers and what they can be used for, permit process for those, through the police inspector.
Yeah, so I, I spoke with him, and I spoke with Kevin about this, and they suggested that I come here, um, just to, to verify.
Read that.
Now, did the building inspector suggest that it be a renewed permit possibly?
Uh, if it's, if it's renewed every year, I would renew it every year. We don't expect to do this for more than one or two years. Um, but, uh, uh, he did not, he didn't mention that.
So, yeah, okay. This is ringing a bell because I think this was actually an issue with this selectment because Dale brought it up, I think, was, was an issue like a year or two ago. People were doing this while building a house next door and it was all issues like, uh, that's why the, there, people weren't following the timeframe, I believe.
So.
Right?
You can't be full-time in that.
I think that, maybe that's the issue. Dale was finding people.
You have to live it to six months, I believe it says in, in our zoning ordinances that says you can live, so that basically says, you know, if somebody that's going to Florida or would say whatever, they can come here, RV on their property, but they can only live in it for six months consecutively. Rules on.
Yeah, I think.
You can't have a permanent resident calling RV.
Ed just had it up, I think it was four months with the possibility of extension, it does.
Right, so I don't, I don't, I don't.
So it's, it's a six.
It's pretty.
It's a six-month seasonal.
Better.
But you're, you're saying you're gonna put the RV on the land, rent it out from, like an Airbnb. But to me, that's a business, um, there's meals and rooms taxes that need to be applied to that, um.
Yeah, so those would be paid.
Yeah.
Is that you're through Airbnb?
This would be business use on residential property in which there is no residential living there, so it's not a home occupation, so this to me would be a business, so they would need to go and get.
But I also, to counterpoint that, you could place it there and live for four months with up to six months' extension. But it's, it's, it's almost similar though to somebody owning a home and choosing to Airbnb it for a full year, like a year.
And that's a business as well.
Right, which I don't think we really, there's no enforcement of, you don't have any registration of Airbnbs.
There's many camps, I don't know how it is on.
Yeah, that's.
On North Lake, on North Lake or whatever, but, but many camps that are, people are renting, that don't live there full-time, they're literally their second seasonal home, that they rent B and B, I mean.
But that's a code enforcement issue, that's.
Right, it's being part of this board.
Yeah, that's why I put it up. Or so.
We're not enforcement, set, arms.
So it's, my, my point is, is, um, this would be, this is being proposed as a business on a residential property, so we, the variants, we need to pay licenses through the state, whatever those are, registration with the state.
I guess I just don't see that, I guess I don't see how it's any different than somebody owning a home that's not required, because I don't think our, we don't have any town ordinances that require registration of it as a business, the rooms and meals taxes and all that is paid through, because you pay off fees through Airbnb.
But that is a business, and so those, those, those that might be doing it are doing it out of code, because it is a business.
But if they live there, if, I guess it'd be, I guess it, yeah.
Then, well, then it's a home-based business, it's, it is, it's, it's still a business.
I see what you're saying, it, people run as a business.
Yeah.
I just don't think we have an avenue of enforcing, like, we're not an enforcement wing, but I don't know, like, if it's, if there's nothing for us to point to in a code. I mean, he could live there for one month and then rent it for five months, and it's the same thing as somebody living in their camp or house on the tuckaway for one month and renting it for the full summer.
So I think, so the way, when we get some of these, thank you for your time on it, because obviously, we do our stuff, we see something that's different, it takes us some conversation, which is a, all part of the process. So we have a permissive zoning ordinance, meaning we state what is permitted, everything else is not permitted. So under, this would be residential agricultural district, permitted uses, we list them out, there's, uh, dated them, single-family residences and associated accessory dwelling units, duplex or two-family residences, multifamily, not, six, seasonal dwellings, accessory use, outbuildings, farming and related agricultural uses, home occupations, manufactured homes, excluding recreational vehicles based on a permanent foundation. Then we'll define, you know, if we got a location, we define it as to what it is, um, and then there's, you know, those setbacks for everything and, and everything else. So.
So in that part of the recreation of vehicles, there's no, nothing specifically that says owner of the property must be staying in that recreational.
And it's not listed as a permitted use, it's just recreational vehicles are discussed, I think, just as a subsection.
It's clarifying, I think they're clarifying that, that our foundations will be manufactured home, um, because you have to follow those on their own lots.
Right, but in that recreational section, I don't know which section you were, the, when you, the first one you read that covered recreational in like the four months?
That travel trailer, motorhomes, travel trailers.
Yeah, that doesn't get into specifics, right? I guess I'm, if somebody rents their house out on a yearly lease basis, the town doesn't, we don't.
Doesn't, no, it happened.
Right, can.
So I can be issued, right, so, you know, I had so many conversations, I was trying to say, I'm going to plan to work out and, you know, with, you know, watering, water up, you know, that kind of stuff. That's kind of what they.
You mean the fact that it's all self-contained?
Or how that is done?
Oh, okay.
So I think the thought was is to provide details. Almost like, I don't know if that's what we, you know, need to that extent, but I think that's why you need the recommendation on this direction. That's a little bit.
Yeah, so the, so the, um, there actually already is a site plan and my intention was to put the, put the camper van in the building envelope of the house, because it already meets all the setbacks. And in terms of, of the black and gray water, they're self-contained tanks that I can either drive the van to the wastewater disposal plant, or more likely I'll, I'll take the tanks out and put them in my car, I drive to Merrimack, uh, two, three times a week where I can dispose.
You could also get the local, um, we got your port of body business coming, just pump right there.
Yeah, I, I call.
The permit that goes through.
Right, just throw it out there.
And that was part of the reason of, of at least allowing campers, and again, on a property, making a permit for it, the, the coenforcement was to allow. It's, it's, it's a part of it, it's that way safety issue, make sure there's, avoiding people actually just living in them year-round when they're not designed for it and it creates a hazard, um, making sure that there's, or gray water.
Having people put, put tents up in.
Yeah.
I think I just lean towards that it, it truly falls back to Dale, but to your point, it might be worthwhile to, I don't know what the permit looks like for that, but like just explain all that out in a memo to Dale, because it clearly states that it's a building inspector thing. But I do surely even think that the overall Airbnb rental is kind of almost a town ordinance issue, it's a separate thing, because, you know, you go to places like, oh, just on the Cape, my rental had to have put a, the town of Orleans gives a registration for each rental property, because they make sure, and that's how they regulate it, because they built it into their ordinance.
The two things I think, because of, like, coastal, we have it's located, um, I think those are kind of, is kind of their issue, obviously. With all of that being said, too, this is a terminal node, uh, dealing with a lot of folks doing, living on lands. As, if I have a better term.
Yeah.
Uh, so it is something that the town is dealing with, um, but it's something that you have, you have.
Because from a site plan perspective, I'm not even sure if we can, what we'd review it against.
Well, yeah, I mean, to Ms. Anderson's point, I'm kind of leaning this way, it's, it's not specifically, it doesn't seem to fit any of the categories that are, are permitted uses of a residential lot. And what we do allow for travel trailers, it, it's unclear as to, you know, what that, what they could be used for, um, for motorhomes and travel trailers. So I, you know, it's tough at this level to, um, to do our guidance, I understand that the building inspector is probably looking for something from this board to kind of guide them and kind of gray area, to be honest, um, our, our, our ordinance. Like to.
I'd say push it to zoning, but then Dale will be the one giving the interpretation, he's the one that's a little on the fence about it.
Why do we seek legal counsel?
Can we move for conceptual? Or can Chris?
Non-binding, so. I, I think, I think the building inspector, Chris could potentially get a lead. I think he should, I would. I, I don't think he wants to mess this up. Because again, for the zoning side of it, it wouldn't come through us. If it was a site plan, because of a business exposure or something like that, a change of use of land, or business, that potentially would come before us, doesn't need to go there, that might be something where, um, town administrator, building inspector could probably get some. Interpretation, so you can kind of, I don't think you're going to get a clear answer for this one tonight. Anyway, but it's, um, I think that's probably where it's going to go for the town side of it on this one.
I think it's back, yeah, back to the building inspector and Chris, town administrator.
Okay, and then they'll determine what I need to do from there?
They'll, they'll, they'll probably get some input and make a determination of, do we just go off the current permit process for travel trailers, or do they?
Okay.
Probably be to go to zoning for some relief or to us and site plan or something like that.
Okay. And luckily there's questions, Kevin's here, so he shares the office of Dale.
Yeah, yeah, you know, we, we talked in my back and forth a little bit, and it was, we literally scratched our head and that one's there and we're kind of like, oh, that can get bad. This had, this had a thing, um, I think Dale will be probably, again, not to, I think Dale, I do think Dale will be fine with figuring out a solution, I do think it's bigger than, um, so.
Yep.
You know, and he knows that, you know, and what happened.
Sure.
Uh, because it is, it's, but most of the stuff is then, uh, totally different.
Yep. Been saying for years, people that live in their campers year-round on lots that they're not supposed to.
And that was part of when this was changed, and, and pre-existing campers, whoever are not grandfathered or exempt from the reg, the regulation that was approved by the town voters a few years ago regarding campers, and that was part of why that zoning was changed, was to give the coenforcers some more, um, strength to enforce those, because again, a lot of those conditions, those in them, things by nature, they're living in them.
Insulate them, put panels around the bottles.
That kind of thing, and it's a, it's a life safety issue, that, that's, that's not what we're here for, so.
Yeah, so I mean, it, it's temporary and, uh, not a lot of impact, so I'll, I'll, I'll do what you said, I'll, I'll follow up with Dale and, um, we'll see where that goes.
All right, thanks so much, appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Glad I got to sit on, on your party.
Uh, the next item on the agenda, we had a conceptual application rev- review from Kung Food, uh, Kevin, did you say that they, did they withdraw, or did they ask that it be moved to a different night?
Well, uh, they, they said that they would withdraw, so I replied that, well, I replied kind of, because I think they, they thought that what happened last time kind of supplied as a conceptual. So I said, well, if you need more information, but you're not quite ready, obviously I told them the design review, I haven't heard a reply back on that.
Or conceptual, it didn't really matter to us.
Maybe you didn't see, but they did, he did respond.
Oh, did he respond? Sorry, I had.
Just close that, that's fine, because I think with conceptuals, they're, they're, so.
I think we're past a conceptual anyways, I mean, the plans they had.
They had a ten-minute conceptual hearing within their site plan here.
Yeah, it should have been.
So we'll, we'll, we'll just move on from that one.
Yep.
Uh, public comment, we reserve the night, time and date every, every meeting to allow for the public to have comment at this point, can't speak towards specific applications, there's nobody here, uh, besides us, moving on, approval of minutes, we're, uh, none for tonight. There will be some, I'm sure, for the next, uh, few that have gone through, uh, select board, staff board member updates, I'll just go around the table, uh, start with Ms. Jones, do you have anything, um, for us?
Only that I won't be here for the fourteenth, I will be, uh, we're going on a two-week vacation to Canada, so hopefully the Canadians will let us in this time.
You just came back, where you going?
Pardon?
I was thinking, sorry.
She's going a little farther drive. Or fly.
No, probably what I'm saying.
Gary, do you have anything?
Nothing except I'll just share that we're a different committee, uh, a facility assessment committee, you know, and maybe we'll see.
Not, not looking at the quality of status, like, all the town buildings or something like that, yeah.
All the town, town facilities.
Wonderful, that's a good thing to have, uh, at least documented. Mr. Moran for select board, and thank you for being here tonight, and I understand you're the new.
I will be here for the next four months, until at least November.
And then the alternate for you is?
Uh, the alternate, it would be either Tyler or Ben.
Okay.
If I'm not here, but I plan on being.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Diligent on my meetings, uh, I've been busy with the select board, um, talked about recycling center this last meeting, that was fun, uh, if you saw that on the videos. Um, we have a lot of events coming up this weekend, so people know that there is the parade, and this will be not like the Christmas parade, this is going to be a big parade, like the vans, there's floats, there's, it will, definitely something good to see. A lot of effort was put in by the three-hundredth committee for this, uh, there also, that evening, there'll be fireworks here at this building, uh, they'll be going off at dusk, so if you do plan on coming, if anybody's still watching at this time, you know, eight-thirtieth, you should be here by, because it will be dark by fourth, nine o'clock. So it's nice fireworks, and then on Sunday, there's the blueberry pancake breakfast, which is up at the town square at the top, uh, which is good, that money goes to help the historical society, uh, for raising funds to help the history of Nottingham, and, um, pretty much all I thought of right now.
Is that the fall of week to re-enact them?
Yeah, that's coming up too, all this is available on the website, it's been updated on the town website, so if you want to look up this, again, this is very active time for the three-hundredth anniversary, and a lot of time has been put in over the past two years for this, so if you do get a chance to get out and you don't have previous plans, it will be worth your time, I feel.
And I didn't catch the, uh, I know there's been discussion on the recycling center and I haven't had a chance to catch the, that meeting, but I, uh, did serve on the prior, many years ago, recycling center committee, where we looked at a bunch of things and, um, I think Nottingham's proud, I think it's over fifty years or something, the longest-running, continuous-running, uh, recycling center in the nation, last I knew, and, uh, I think people need to understand, there's always going to be a cost with taking care of trash, refuse recyclables. What we do is sometimes offset that by, by diverting some and, and hopefully doing it at a, uh, either to lessen our cost or potentially making even some money off of it, but it does, it does take a, uh.
We really ain't making money off anything anymore, trucking costs, tipping costs, all the stuff that goes along with it.
Love to break even?
Uh, I'm not even, if you break even with what? We're not breaking even anywhere.
That's, I know it's a, a short-term at the moment, but hopefully in the long term it'll go back to, go back the other way, if it wants to go to a different route, I know coming back from it is, is, is difficult, towns have a single stream and got rid of it because. Don't let it.
We also have employment peo- problems, you know, getting people to work there, there's hourly prompt, there's.
Heat.
There, winter heat, overtime summer, you know, there's no air conditioning in the building, there's no nothing.
The municipalities.
It's a four-hundred thousand dollar debt that goes on to the taxpayers, and people in town don't, never mind, I should.
No, I, I.
I'll watch the YouTube.
Yeah, yeah, I know there's a lot that goes into it, but again, I think there's a legal requirement for the state that, that disposal services must be provided by municipality or accounted for, so how, how we do it and how other towns do it, you know, there's, there's other options that I get that, I'm, uh, part of our recycling center and what we do. But I know there's difficulties there.
Um, nothing really for me, I'm gonna try and, I know we got the works, our next meeting is the work session, so.
Yeah.
I'm gonna try and get, uh, I guess like a review markup style word doc of the site plan, you did send a subdivision, right, you found that, I think I saw that.
Oh, did I not send the book? I think I just sent.
I think.
I sent you one, and then we had to verify, I had to send you the second one.
You're gonna, you found one, you're gonna verify if it was the most current subdivision, I think. But my goal is to try and get that to you in the next five days or so, obviously like two weeks. Hopefully we have a good discussion on the twenty-fourth. Hopefully we have a good discussion on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, and, and that was going to be a reminder to everybody, we did set that one aside to try to get some headway on, um, specifically, specifically subdivision regulation updates, um, so we can also tackle some site plan there, and then we could start branching into, uh, a little bit of discussion about, you know, what we might want to work on for zoning, because we're getting into that season, um, I can't remember, Kevin or Blair, if either of you have a list of kind of action items that we've identified over the years, if not, I'll go back through and find the last one I had, um, it's been a bit, but.
Uh, yeah, well, it was, uh, shoot, I may have combined my thoughts with your thoughts, but I do have, uh, subdivision regulations as being the top one. Um, I have a note about defining impervious surface being another, um, this one may have been me, but, um, review and edit what we consider to be our standard conditions.
Yes, or create something that's specifically.
Or, yes, exactly. And, and there's an extension to this, and you brought this up too, which I thought was a good point, is how do we reference it in our motions? Sometimes just referencing the date of my most recent memo, because it would be in there, um, and that's a public document, so that might be one way to do that, but thinking about something else, so those are the two, and then roadway setbacks, we wanted to try to get in that, get into that in the subdivision regs, um, that's a, that'll be a, a beefy conversation, but, um, and then, as I had mentioned before, um, I'd like to create a site plan review application, and I would like to add, request the summary section to the different applications.
Yeah, that's the application updates, yeah.
Yep.
So those were, that's kind of the list I have going right now, those are like the first order ones.
Yeah, the narrative section or the summary section, I think, is important, some give it, and I think it's very helpful, uh, but we don't specify it, so I think that would be a good thing.
Should be a requirement.
And like an impact statement, which, I don't know, what we usually modify as being impact statement.
You mean like the environmental impact?
No, no, like, under the subdivision reg seven point one.
They're supposed to admit, but, here's how this is going to ruin things.
Application, application forms, complete subdivision application includes, uh, you know, plan sets, so we talked about, that's one area we talked about, reducing the number of sets, and possibly requiring the applicant to write an electronic copy, so it's easier, so we don't have to scan and deal with all that, um.
Number five there?
Number five, completed impact statement form for major and open space subdivisions.
Is that also like, is somebody using the term impact statement, the environmental impact study is a requirement, I wonder if there's some overlap.
We should probably, we should probably look at, review it and, and find it.
Or create a specific.
Or correct the terminology, yeah.
Yes.
And what was that in, uh?
Subdivision reg seven point one.
Impact statement.
Terminology, we get FERO.
What's that?
Terminology, here are that terminology.
Seven point?
One, number five.
Um, so is that a requirement on an application?
That's part of the.
A submittal.
Submittal, application forms, complete subdivision application includes three copies, three sets, six, blah, 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 number five, completed impact statement. Specify what the heck, what that is, I think.
It's, and I think it's on our checklist, we have environmental impact study.
Yeah.
So we have that term.
Yeah, yeah.
And I know we've received them, barrier engineering is submitted for other applications.
We should probably clarify that in our, in our regs, I think we call it environmental impact assessment.
Assessment, yes, environmental impact something. That's used multiple times.
So it might be wrong for, but, um, so yeah, so hopefully we'll get, we'll, we'll get some headway, again, updates of the subdivision regs, site plan regs are much easier, we just have to have public hearings and get them corrected, uh, we talked about pulling out the appendices, I don't know if this is a good time to do that. Do it, then I think that's a good idea, the reason for that is you can amend the appendices a lot easier without having to go through the whole, uh, hearing and corrections. I did notice tonight, uh, under one of the tables for, for driveway standards, we must have pulled it out of something else, like it's a picture, it says driveways greater than eight, nine hundred feet, see no. That's under fifteen point two. That's that table.
It, it, in subdivision regs?
Yeah, down in Nottingham Road, driveway design, construction standards, table one, design standards, first column, residential driveway, parentheses, greater than nine hundred feet, see no. So.
A no no.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's either just get rid of that or figure out what's not supposed to be.
Making it.
So if they want it longer than that, they have to make a vote, right, like the pernals are doing.
We don't even know.
We, we, we have nothing currently, so that's what I'm saying, so it's either, we had a note that's, but, that either adds guidance to them, so like, may require this, this, this from the town, not allowed, whatever, but we probably need to, uh, explain that.
I mean, that's the zoning ordinance. No, we, we've.
I think it was more the proceed, the procedure for it, right, because you, you were going to check on if, what's the legal procedure for like?
I, I'm going to do the same, I'm going to ask my colleagues to see if there is some standard, um, so it could be a quick question, it might just be whatever your town is, but there might, it might go point in the direction of the harvest.
I think we were on the right track, that if it's included, if the application's included with like the initial submission, you're sending out the same thing, you just need to make sure it clearly states subdivision with conditional use, but if it's submitted separately, that does need to be re-notified, yeah. If that makes sense, I, because we're going to make sure we know what we're asking.
And then, and then again, TP could come up also when it's on a subdivision regular, it's a current lot that is, is applying for.
Yeah, as its own separate, as its own purpose.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
So watch your email for that, and, uh, and we'll, we'll go from there, um, for me, uh, I think Blair had sent out the thing for the webinar today, I think it was NHMA or SRPC that did it regarding House Bill one, six, six, one, and I don't want to say who it's on here, but I, uh, if you haven't had a chance yet, open, open that PowerPoint, because the PowerPoint was included in it, and it gives you a lot of, right, the bullet points of what it is, as well as there was a PDF attachment, um, from NHMA to guide us through some of the, uh, planning and zoning changes in twenty twenty-two. We'll have to make sure we're, publication of fees, that's a town thing, the website is allowed for that, training, uh, is, is optional, um, for new members and zoning board members, but, uh, suggested, I think it's all required.
It also extends to alternates now, it's not just full members, so you can go get trainings and stuff.
Uh, an item about incentives. Written findings, expands the language requiring land use, local land use boards, uh, to provide specific written findings of fact to support an approval or disapproval.
Oh, it is approval too.
This, they say, basically is more, really need to be, be careful with disapproval, that you have very specific.
Especially ones that, that has, you know, fulfilled those approvals. If you think it's just going to fly through, then, yeah.
These are not, replacing conditions of approval, um, again, prior, definitely read that section, CBA.
And I have this information up on my computer, right?
It's in the email, yeah, it was in the email today from, uh, Blair.
All right, yep.
I think some of that written finding stuff was because of that new, isn't there a new land court that's supposed to be, the appeals?
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
Sorry, I'm trying to keep it quick, but some of these are really important.
Anyway.
They recorded the webinar, so.
Definitely look at the slide, look at the power, the PDF, um.
And this goes into effect August twenty-third, so the September meeting is going to start to need.
Exactly.
We have to do, we're going to have to deal with it.
There was a request, uh, so the scenic road medallions that many people, especially Ms. Mooney, has been, has been working very hard on for years to, to get added to the scenic roads, those finally got in, they got installed, the request to have them moved to, to the actual, uh, street signs, so they're actually visible. Most of them are on their little posts that are short.
Not three feet high.
So I will follow up with, uh, Thomas.
Francis Longer, who's, sorry.
Road agent.
We got signs, we're moving in the right direction.
Oh, yeah, like I noticed.
It just kind of looked like they're in the woods.
Stevens Hill was, kind of looked like a ditch marker in a way, so.
Yeah, well, that thing works perfect.
But I noticed it, I noticed that one.
We'll keep the, uh, impact fees and CIP in, in mind as, as the CIP process begins, we'll definitely see how that looks like it's, if anything looks like it's going to be guiding us for our impact fees, we should definitely revisit those, especially the, uh, fire and, uh, fire station part of it.
I sent in on that webinar, and, 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 a lot of questions, a lot of questions. I did have a question, where's our absent, landing board member?
Um, I will reach out to said member, um, and get some of this, you miss, uh.
Yes.
And, and just check in with her as a new member, and make sure she has the support she needs and, um, is able to commit to the requirement and is meeting the expectations of our, uh, bylaws.
Bylaws.
Um, the one thing I have is that, uh, SRPC, along with all the other regional planning commissions, is working on a, um, regional housing needs assessment, so this is something that's done every five years, and it's a statewide effort, uh, to develop a housing needs assessment. There's going to be a workshop, um, two segments on, on Tuesday, August sixteenth, and, um, you know, the organizers of it within SRPC, because this is just for, uh, SRPC, the other ones are doing their own thing, uh, for this, for this part of it, but they're trying to solicit feedback and information and general thoughts on housing needs and housing policy and, and regulations, um, and they would love a representative from the town of Nottingham. The town manager was sent an email and doesn't believe that any, um, staff is going to be available. So I wanted to put it out to this group, you know, you're all rather engaged, um, you all have quite a bit of knowledge, if there's anybody that wants to go on the half of Nottingham, um, on Tuesday the sixteenth, uh, it's for a couple hours, Nottingham's is nine to eleven in the morning, if there is another session at one to three, if the, the one in the morning doesn't work. The alternative is that I go, um, I'm happy to do it, you know, um, but, and the preference is as if somebody from the town, you know, a resident, engaged person, knowledgeable person goes, um, so I don't want anyone to feel pressure, you know, or, uh, be guilted in the going, but I wanted to put it out there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I think I can go, uh, I, I don't know if I sent out the email to everybody or not, I was waiting.
We saw it, I saw it, yeah.
I was confirming that it's in person, so it is at SRPC office.
Yes, it is, at least that's the way I'm reading this.
It is, I, I, I called them to ask, because I wasn't certain if you know it was virtual or not, so I'm, I'm going to pencil myself in for that one.
Okay.
I should have confirmation.
That's great, I thank you for that, um, there is a worksheet, if you can fill it out beforehand, um, you know, there's a link to it, otherwise, yeah, just show up and. Awesome, that's it for me, thank you.
I think we're ready to adjourn, and I thank everybody for their time, again, another late night, a lot of meetings, I think we were pretty efficient in, especially with the cases that we had, so thank you again for your time and commitment.
In case I make a motion of you.
Second.
A favor, stand up and leave, thank you so much.
Welcome back, John.